The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Present.
Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Evans?
Present.
Alderman Page?
Present.
Alderwoman Gracia?
Present.
Alderman Calder?
Here.
Alderwoman Rice?
Present.
Alderman Gunther?
Yes.
Alderman Laffey?
Here.
Alderman Stevens?
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Present.
Alderwoman Howard?
Here.
Alderwoman Green?
Present.
Alderman Altenberg? Alderwoman Peel?
Present.
Thank you, Alderman. I got you.
Sorry, Altenberg.
Thank you. Alderwoman Peel? Alderman Todd?
Present.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderwoman Keys?
Here.
Alderwoman Walker?
Present.
Alderman Bacaro?
Present.
Alderman Orion?
Here.
Alderman Cone?
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Boyd?
Present.
Alderman Grass?
Here.
President Ballmer?
Present.
Alderman Bosley?
Present.
Alderwoman Peel? Alderwoman Davis?
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Present.
Twenty-seven, present, you have form.
Thank you so much, Sarita. A quorum being present will be led in prayer this morning by Pastor John Watson of Maple Temple.
God bless each of you. Before we start prayer, I'd like to have a moment of silence for one of St. Louis' great percussion artists, Gary Kennedy, or his wife, he named Archie Kennedy. This is the twin brother of our own Board Clerk, the Honorable Terry Kennedy. We want to quote you from the Holy Scripture, Second Corinthians nine and eight. "God is able to provide you abundance for every good work." "Gracious God, heavenly Father, as we seek to serve, we look for your guidance. We thank you for this new day, fresh from your hand, with its possibilities for great and good living. By your Spirit, may we always be honest, kind, and forgiving. May we be mild in our criticism of others, patient with those who criticize us, and considerate with those who differ from us. As we follow the example of the scriptures that instruct us about doing good for others, may we during this new transition consistently reflect on the power of the Word of God. Now may the blessings of your powerful presence rest upon us today and every day. Together, lead us in the path of unity and peace for your name's sake in this great city. Into your arms we commit ourselves, our family, our city. Amen."
Thank you very much, Pastor Watson. It's always a pleasure. Thank you, sir. All right, line item three. We will suspend with our regular order of business to take up line item twenty-one, the second reading of resolutions, committee reports, and adoptions. Madam Clerk?
Give me just a second, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Report from the Engrossment Rules Resilience, Resolutions, and Credentials Committee, newly elected president of the Board of Aldermen, Megan E. Green.
All right, Alderman from the seventh ward, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The credentials committee met this morning at about nine fifteen a.m. to review the credentials of President-elect Green. We asked her a number of questions about whether she met the qualifications, and the committee finding that she does, in fact, meet the qualifications to serve as president of the Board of Aldermen. The committee unanimously adopted or approving her credentials, and I'm presenting that to the full board and would ask that the full Board of Aldermen adopt the report of the of the credentials committee. So therefore, I move that the full board adopt the report of the credentials committee, approving the credentials of President-elect Green to serve as president of the Board of Aldermen.
All right, we have a motion by the Alderman from the seventh. I heard a multitude of seconds. We will, I heard the ninth with his little cracky speaker there that comes out all lines. That was the one I heard the most, so we'll go with that. So we have a motion by the Alderman from the seventh, second by the Alderman from the ninth. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, President Green. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
I thought they were talking about the
Present.
Marlene spoke to me about that.
Mr. Kennedy, please mute. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, Alderwoman Tyus?
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Present, I'm sorry.
Aye. Present, I'm sorry.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
I'm sorry, you're calling the roll.
Okay, I'm sorry, present.
Alderwoman Evans?
Present.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
You're calling the roll, sir.
Oh, roll, present, sorry.
Alderwoman Gracia?
Present.
Alderman Calder?
Here.
Alderwoman Rice?
Present.
Alderman Gunther?
Here.
Alderman Ballmer?
Present.
Alderman Laffey?
Present.
Alderman Stevens?
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Present.
Alderwoman Howard?
Present.
Alderman Altenberg? Alderwoman Peel?
Here.
Alderman Todd?
Present.
Alderwoman Davis?
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Present.
Alderwoman Keys?
Here.
Alderwoman Walker?
Present.
Alderman Bacaro?
Present.
Alderman Orion?
Here.
Alderman Cone?
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Present.
Alderman Grass?
Here.
President Green?
Present.
Alderman Altenberg? Twenty-seven, present, you have form.
All right. I will retire the goose. President Green is now your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I very much appreciate it. And before we commence with the business for today, I would just like to take a moment of personal privilege just for a minute. I had hoped that we would be in an in-person meeting today, but the flu, COVID, and RSV make it much more prudent that we meet virtually before we gather for the holidays next week with our friends, our families, and our pets. I would want to start out by thanking all of you. I will never forget the colleagues who supported my campaign, and I promise to never hold it against anyone who did not. It's time for us to look forward rather than back. Whatever differences we have among us, they are insignificant compared to the trust our constituents have placed in us to enact wise laws and to ensure the equitable and efficient delivery of services. I would like to single out two colleagues for special mention. First, I commend the Aldermen from the tenth ward for his fair and good-natured tenure as our acting president. He neither asked for the job nor expected it, but he rose to the occasion and brought humor, decorum, and efficiency to our meeting, skills that I hope to emulate, and he deserves our gratitude. Second, I congratulate the Aldermen from the seventh ward for a spirited campaign. Within the usual tolerances for the high emotions of a campaign, I think voters of our city were presented with a fairly drawn choice. His concession was gracious, and his offer to help, as I pulled together a team, was heartfelt and much appreciated. I will only add that while I think Dewey the Alder Dog was probably better looking than Archie, Archie does seem to be a much better behaved Alder Dog than my Dewey the Alder Dog. And of course, Baby Harry stole the show and is certainly welcome in the chambers whenever we get back to the chambers, which I anticipate will come after the first of the year. Colleagues, we have a lot of work to do in front of us. This board is emerging from the shadow of its worst scandal. While I do not believe that any other members of this body acted the way our former colleagues did, we all have a long way to go to restore the people's trust in their representatives. The board will be half of its size in less than six months. By simple arithmetic, half of us will be gone, and after the March and April elections, even more of us could be gone. For now, though, there are twenty-eight of us, and we will be the ones to suggest, review, and implement the structural changes necessary before that new board is seated. Those changes must include increased transparency and ethical guidelines, and better and more professional staffing. As I think they should also include, and I think that they should also include consideration of the fourteenth ward alderwoman's suggestion that we set compensation that reflects the increased responsibilities of the job, as long as that compensation is considered in the context of better and more competitive pay and benefits for all city employees. I do not think we should tie one to the other, but I strongly believe that our employees, particularly frontline employees, need better pay and working conditions, especially after the pandemic these last few years. I will be asking the board over the next several months to work through a comprehensive agenda that will respond to the concerns of our, that our constituents have raised. I see our role as legislators to represent our constituents to city government. They have asked us to build strong neighborhoods and safe streets, and work together for gender and sexuality, sexual equality, and prove, improve trash collection, and create jobs, and work with our schools, and demand racial justice, and address climate change, and ensure that the remaining pandemic money, infrastructure money, the transportation money, affordable housing money, the RAM settlement money, and the new marijuana revenue is spent on our most pressing needs and on hopes for a city that works for everyone. Over the next several weeks, I'll be finalizing a president's office staff. It will be, by necessity, a different staff. While I am fairly far down the road to making offers, please let me know if you have any suggestions or perhaps ambitions. I appreciate all of the Aldermen and women who have met with me thus far to discuss how we can collaborate around a shared agenda to move our city forward, and I look forward to meeting with those who I've not yet had the opportunity to speak with individually over the next week. It is paramount to me that we build a board of Aldermen that is based on trust and mutual respect. In the past, there were times that I did not feel welcomed here at the Board of Aldermen. Others have told me that they felt the same way. That changes now. We are the region's most important deliberative body. We lead change, and to do that right, we must welcome all voices. I am here for the hard conversations, the laughs, and the work that we all must do to build a St. Louis that works for everyone. That's all I have to say for now, but please be patient as I learn how to serve in this legislative body facing the other direction. And I hope you will join me for the formal inauguration on Monday, November twenty-eighth, at ten a.m. in the rotunda, when we can gather indoors more safely. And with this, with that, we will move to line item four in our agenda, introduction of honored guests. There any?
I have, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'm trying to, is that the right word, Miss President? I don't want to mispronounce.
Madam, Madam President.
Madam President, yes, ma'am, okay. I would like to, my honored guest today is my son, my firstborn. His birthday is today. He is fifty-five years old. So happy birthday, John Montgomery, Jr.
Wonderful. Alderman from the twenty-third?
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my special guest.
Alderwoman from the eighth?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to have today someone who should be, I should be across the hall from right now, but the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, her birthday yesterday. So just love for her to be all of our special guests this morning. Happy birthday, Alderwoman.
Happy birthday, Alderwoman. Any more introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, we'll move to line item five, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, Thursday, November tenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we approve the meeting minutes from our previous meeting, Thursday, November tenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It was moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded from the Alderman from the ninth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Line item six, report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
We will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of our informal calendars? Alderwoman from the first? I think you are muted, Alderwoman from the first.
Madam, Madam President, members of the board, first of all, congratulations on your historic victory and your new position. And second of all, I would like to, after our conversation from last week in which I invited people who wanted to write up more things to be on the the Board of Aldermen rules, I wish to take that off of the informal calendar. And I actually do have some more amendments, some that we wrote up when I used to be part of another pack of people called progressives. And so I don't, the things that I believe in, I believe in if it is with the current administration or the previous administration. I want to thank you for talking about having fairness, because that's what I want and trust, and that's what needs to be hap, to happen at this Board of Aldermen, and I've been here the longest, and I've I've watched how unsure a lot of people are. So these are my amendments to the resolution.
Oh, woman.
I'm sorry, yes.
We're just taking this off of the informal calendar for the moment.
Right, you're correct. I'll talk to them later. Yes, I'd like to put, take them off of the informal calendar, and I guess it will go to, I don't know if it goes to second reading or first reading.
Second reading. So Madam Clerk, could you please place resolution number one as amended at the end of the second reading calendar?
So noted.
First reading of board bills.
Board Bill one twenty-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Grass, an ordinance repealed in paragraph A of section two of ordinance number six nine nine one five, approved on January the twentieth two thousand and fifteen, and in lieu thereof, a new paragraph enacted extending the period of time during which the DeBoliver Special Business District shall be permitted to collect the tax within the boundaries therein established, submitting to the qualified voters residing in the DeBoliver Place Special Business District a proposal to continue the levy of tax on the real property located in said district for ten years, submitting the proposal to the voters of said district at the general election on April fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and containing effectiveness and emergency clauses. Board Bill one twenty-two, sponsored by Alderman Calder, and an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, for the seventeen eight, seven, one eight, through seven two zero Lumiere Place and two, two one two Morgan Street area. Board Bill one twenty-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Gracia, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Apportement, authorizing a supplemental appropriation from the North Side Regeneration Special Allocation Fund, amended ordinance number seven one five zero five, commonly referred to as City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, appropriated and setting up for existing and accruing revenues in such funds to address certain current obligations of the city relating to the North Side Regeneration Redevelopment Area and containing emergency clause. Board Bill one twenty-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated September twenty-seven, twenty-
I'm gonna send you nine of them, image.
Twenty-nine.
I'm sending them now.
For the twenty-nine fifty-three through twenty-nine fifty-seven Dr. Martin Luther King area. That's the extent of reference, I'm sorry, first read of board bills.
Line item twelve, reference to committee.
For the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill one twenty-one, to the HUSS Committee, Board Bill one twenty-two, one twenty-three, and one twenty-four. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Line item thirteen, second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of neighborhood development with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill seventy-six, sponsored by President Green, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, for the thirty-six twenty-nine Hydronic Avenue area. Board Bill eighty-three, sponsored by Alderman Laffey, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, for the seventy-seven twenty-six through seventy-seven thirty Virginia Avenue area. The following board bill was reported out of public utilities with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one seventeen, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance adopting pursuant to intergovernmental agreement section seven zero point two one zero to seven zero point three two zero, I'm sorry, point three two five, inclusive of the revised statutes of Missouri and authorizing the City of St. Louis by and through its water division for the purpose of outlining an agreement of the respective responsibilities of the party with respect to the area described in the agreement, which sits in the City of Clayton and authorizing the city to accept transfer of the private easement from the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill seventy-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Evans, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Revan A.L. Manson Senior Way pursuant to ordinance number six eight nine three seven, which shall begin at the intersection of St. Louis Avenue and Euclid Avenue and run east on St. Louis Avenue at the intersection of St. Louis Avenue and St. Louis Avenue. Board Bill one twelve, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Calder, pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three three three, as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to combat slower traffic on the twenty-four hundred block of South Thirteenth Street, two thousand block of South Thirteenth Street, twenty-three hundred block of Minorah Street, twenty-three thirty block of South Tenth Street, twenty-two hundred block of South Tenth Street, eighteen hundred block of South Tenth Street, eighteen hundred block of South Ninth Street, twenty-one hundred block of South Ninth Street, fifteen hundred block of South Broadway Street, thirteen hundred block of South Broadway Street, seventeen hundred block of South Broadway, nineteen hundred block of South Broadway, six hundred block of Sidney Street, a thousand block of Sidney Street, a thousand block of Victor Street, one thousand block of Bar, Borden Street, nine hundred block of Shenandoah Avenue, thirteen hundred block of Ann Avenue, one thousand block of Ann Avenue, nine hundred block of Ann Avenue, one hundred block of Allen Avenue, twelve hundred block of Allen Avenue, one thousand block of Guyer Avenue, eight hundred block of Guyer Avenue, seven hundred block of Lafayette Avenue, and the eight hundred block of Lafayette Avenue. The following board bills were reported out of HUSS with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill ninety-three, sponsored by Alderman Page, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, for Cass Avenue, Fourteenth Street, Old Fallon Street, and Hogan Street area. Board Bill one zero four, sponsored by Alderwoman Walker, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, for thirty-four zero one Goodfellow Boulevard area. Board Bill one zero eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Gracia and Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, for the two zero one one through two one, two one two five Locust Street and twenty-one zero six through twenty-one twenty-eight Washington Boulevard area. Board Bill one thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Grass, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, for the four ninety North Kings Highway Boulevard and forty-nine fifty-two through forty-nine fifty-six McPherson Avenue area. Board Bill one fourteen, sponsored by, oh, I'm sorry, I don't have who it's sponsored by. I apologize. Give me just a second. Alderwoman Peel? Thank you. Board Bill one fourteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Peel, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Apportement, authorizing and directing the issuance of and delivery of one or more series of tax increment revenue, revenue notes, including the RPA six tax increment revenue notes in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed four point six million dollars plus cost of issuance containing a severability clause. Board Bill one fifteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Peel, an ordinance adopting a Second Amendment and restated TIP redevelopment plan, approving redevelopment projects for redevelopment projects, area four, six, and eight of St. Louis Innovative District TIP redevelopment area, adopting tax increment financing within redevelopment project areas four, six, and eight, all as described in Second Amendment and restated St. Louis Innovation District Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan containing a severability clause. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Line item fourteen, report of special committees.
We have no.
Perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill one zero seven, sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Esmond and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Control of City of St. Louis to enter and sue and execute on behalf of the city the second amended and restated concession agreement with taste, granting the non-exclusive right, license, and privilege to operate a food and beverage concession at the airport, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent calendars.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt our perfection consent calendar.
Second.
Second.
Uh, moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by, I believe, the Alderwoman from the eighth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the perfection consent calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, board bills for perfection.
We have no.
Third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill seventy, one zero five.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Second.
Second.
Moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by, I believe, the Alderwoman from the fourth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia?
Aye.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Laffey?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg? Alderwoman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg? Twenty-seven, aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman of the twenty-first, or twenty-fifth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman of the twenty-first, or twenty-fifth, and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossment and final passage.
Board Bill fifty-five sponsored by Alderman Odenberg and the following other persons. Howard, Middlebrook, Norrian, Davis, Vacaro, and Green. An ordinance to amend the City of St. Louis Revised Code Chapters four point one eight point zero five five, four point one eight point two two five, four point one eight point three one five, four point one nine point one two zero, four point one nine point one three zero, four point one nine point one four zero, and four point one nine point one seven zero. All as to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as the Board of Trustees of the St. Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan, but not until such time as amendments to Missouri by statutes eight seven point one four zero, eight seven point one four five, eight seven point one five five, eight seven point two six zero, and eight seven point three five zero have become law to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as Board of Trustees of St. Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan and contain an effective date.
Madam Clerk, at the request of the sponsor, please place Board Bill number fifty-five on the informal, on the third reading informal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill ninety-four sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement relating to the Lighthouse St. Louis Transportation Development District and containing a severability clause.
Alderwoman from the second, you are recognized for the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number ninety-four.
Thank you, Madam President, I move to adopt Board Bill ninety-four.
Second.
You may proceed.
Thank you, so Board Bill ninety-four authorized the city to enter into a project agreement with M-two Development Partners to reimburse allowable construction costs incurred using revenue generated by incremental sales tax imposed only within the TDB's boundaries. This TDB created by the Circuit Court in February twenty eighteen, and the area includes only the Lighthouse Project. And sales tax collected commenced June, I'm sorry, July first, twenty-twenty-two. This passed in the HUSS Committee for the one. And it was for the Board of Aldermen last week, so I will take any questions if there are any questions.
Any further discussion on the bill, Alderwoman from the sixth?
Thank you, Madam President, I'd just like to request a roll call.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the second, or seconded by the Alderwoman from the fourth that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number ninety-four. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
No.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Present.
Alderman Gunther?
Present.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Lappy?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Present.
Alderwoman Switzer?
No.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderwoman P.O.? Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Cone?
Present.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman P.O. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Present, thank you. Twenty aye votes, three no votes, and five voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman of the second to third read and finally pass Board Bill number ninety-four.
Board Bill ninety-five sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance approving a petition to establish the Lighthouse St. Louis Community Improvement District, establishing the Lighthouse St. Louis CID as political subdivision of the state of Missouri, approving appointment of the initial Board of Directors and containing a severability and an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the second, you are recognized for the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number ninety-five.
Thank you, Madam President, I move to adopt Board Bill ninety-five.
Second.
You may proceed, Alderwoman from the second.
Okay, so the Lighthouse St. Louis Community Improvement District creates the Lighthouse Community, I'm sorry, creates the Lighthouse Community Improvement District.
I think you muted, Alderwoman from the second.
Oh, I am, I'm sorry, I'm just talking. So this is to construct and equip and maintain various improvements within the CID. It's funded by incremental sales tax and special assessment only in the CID. And the CID includes the entire Lighthouse Point Project excluding the gas station. This passed in Ways and Means, and also this project is located, of course, in the war, in the Second War. IBEW has, number one, has committed a ten million dollar equity investment in the Light Point, Lighthouse Point Project. SODC provided the following informations on Phase One and Two, which is a three hundred and seventy-five hotel room. Eighty thousand square foot indoor water park, thirty-five thousand square foot conference room, fifty condos, and thirty thousand square feet of retail space. This also includes the two hundred slip marina. I have received letters of support from Missouri State Senator Carla May, Missouri State Representative Marlene Terry, and St. Louis County Councilwoman Shalonda Webb. And I will answer any questions.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the sixth, you had your hand up at one point in time, did you take it down? Okay. Right, seeing no further discussion, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the second, seconded by the Alderperson from the fourth that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number ninety-five. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
No.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Present.
Alderman Gunther?
Present.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Lappy?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
No.
Alderwoman Switzer?
No.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderwoman P.O.?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Cone?
Present.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Twenty-one aye votes for no votes and three voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman from the second to third read and finally pass Board Bill number ninety-five.
Board Bill one eleven sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to expand the funds to the extent received containing a severability and an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number one eleven.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to move for adoption of Board Bill number one eleven.
Second.
You may proceed.
Thank you. We have had much discussion about opera funds and the need to provide additional services and support to our citizens who have suffered through a pandemic and also other results from that pandemic, increasing crime and many other issues. These are funds that are being appropriated with much discussion and agreement between the Board of Aldermen, the Board of E and A, and all the department heads with their input on the appropriate expenditures being brought forward in this bill. I ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Alderwoman from the first?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. If the nineteenth Board Alderwoman would yield.
Would the Alderwoman from the nineteenth yield to a question from the Alderwoman from the first? May proceed.
Thank you. Alderwoman, every single day, myself along with many other people hear about what are you doing with the money? And I always tell them, the Board of Aldermen appropriated a lot of money already, but they want to know what is going on, why they don't see it out in the streets. To this day yet, I have not gotten one person in my ward who said they got the five hundred dollars. And there's been some games playing, so the treasurer's gonna get a subpoena next, for next, when we come back because he's played the game with the mayor's office. Can you, and you may not have it on the tip of your tongue, do you know how much money we have already appropriated besides this, which is in your board bill right now? Do you have any ideas? I think the total appropriation from this board is right at about a hundred and eighty-nine million. Somewhere around that, yeah. And then this appropriates how much more? That includes this appropriation here. We also have another opportunity to appropriate more funds that are waiting for suggestions from the administration. But what I wanted to share with you, because I tried to look it up this morning, so I could be accurate. But the portal doesn't, it's not working, and it had not had any any work done on it, and any reporting done since last June. So it was very hard for me, and unfortunately, I'm sure it's difficult for the public. But we can assure them that we do not spend money. We are not allowed to write a check, sign a contract, put out an RFP, nothing. But we will continue to prayerfully suggest and ask for speedier results for these funds. So I see here, it says about ninety-three million here. And I remember, I guess, what, a little over a year ago, my mom's birthday is July the ninth, I was in Illinois and we had a twelve-hour meeting to put money out. Then we came back with another one, that's why I was put off having my surgery because the president and the mayor and the controller needed to try to work together, and I was chosen to be the person that they could work with to compromise. But I don't see anything getting done, I just want to make people know this, I want to make sure there's nothing I have wrong with your bill, but I do have problems that every single day they're asking me. But when are we gonna see work getting done? What is going on? I hear the press saying the portal doesn't work. The executive branch, to me, needs to come to this Board of Aldermen and explain to us why we are appropriating this kind of money in a city that needs, all needs immediately that we do not see this money getting spent. I've heard things where, well, they're sitting on it to hold it for interest, I hope that's not the thing that's going on. I don't know why, but I'm just saying, so this will get to be about two hundred million dollars. And if we don't see anything being spent, I just want the public to know that the, that our duty is to appropriate money. And that's on all, that's from the president goes to Congress, the governor goes to the House and the Senate at the state, and then the mayor comes over to the Board of Aldermen. And once we appropriate it, we are not the people that get out there and pave the streets and patch the streets and do all of this. And also that we can't answer the very questions that you're asking us, that's very frustrating to me. I need to know what I can tell my people, when this gets appropriated, when will it get spent? When is the anticipation? I usually say, well, things take a time to get into the into the chain of advance, and that sometime in the next year you'll see stuff happening, but that hasn't happened. So I was hoping that maybe you had some more information that you could tell me about this, but you don't. So I am supportive of this, but I do hope sooner or later we can get some concrete examples of how this money is being spent, because it is sorely needed. It was needed this summer when grass was up to my knees. I actually was having my husband driving around and taking down addresses, and I was sick about what grass needs to be cut. It's needed for buildings that need to be demolished, to be demolished, and those that need to be boarded properly to do that, it's needed. If we have to do trash pickup and we can't afford to do it, or we can't, not we can't afford it, but we don't have enough people, then whatever we need to do, we need to spend this to keep our city going so that people do not want to leave it. And it is very hard to talk about, they will hear, oh, we appropriated another ninety million dollars, but we are not spending it. And it is not our duty to do it, much as when people told you that the Board of Aldermen wasn't doing their job, and that's when your city services were not getting done, that was never our job, that is the mayor's job. They have, she has directors, or he, when it was he, have directors that's under them, and then they have commissioners, and then they have all kind of people that get paid. The Board of Aldermen gets paid the least of anybody, so not only can we not spend this money once we appropriate it, we also cannot make people get out and do their job. So I just was hoping you had more information as to Chair HUSS, but I appreciate you answering my question, thank you. Thank you. Can't hear you. I'm sorry, Madam President, Madam President, I have no more questions, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the nineteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the eleventh that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number eleven. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam President, that was Board Bill one eleven.
Oh, one eleven, what did I say? Sorry about that.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer? Alderman Laffey.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peal.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Alderwoman.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Ross.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer. Twenty-eight I votes. Thank you. Twenty-eight I votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman of the nineteenth and third read and finally passed Board Bill number one eleven.
Thank you.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bill seventy, one zero five, ninety-four, ninety-five, and one eleven.
With all other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix their signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. All right. Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Aldermen from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Is he still here? Alderwoman from the nineteenth, do you want to take it?
Madam President, I move that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the nineteenth, seconded from the Alderman from the eleventh, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. I see a number of hands up. Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the board, I'd ask that my name be added to Resolution one thirty-six and also move that it be passed in bank.
Second.
Again.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Madam President. The Alderwoman from the first did one of the things, and I was also just gonna ask that my name be added to Resolution one forty-two. And, yeah, one forty-two.
Right. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I also ask that my name be added to Resolution number one forty-two, and further recommend that we adopt Resolution one forty-two and bank.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other business? Alderman from the fifth.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I also ask that my name be added to Resolution number one forty-three. I further recommend that the Board adopt Resolution one forty-three and bank.
Second. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please take note. It has been moved by the Alderwoman from the nineteenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the eleventh, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution one forty, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Ross. Oliver Place Special Business District Renewal.
Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you are recognized on Resolution one forty.
Thank you, Madam President. I request that we pass this Resolution one forty unanimously.
Hearing no objections, you may proceed.
This resolution simply calls for a meeting for Board Bill one twenty-one to continue the work and continue the service involved with the Oliver Place Special Business District that Alderman Ross and I share, currently share in the Oliver Place neighborhood.
Sorry, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing over my dog at the moment. I apologize. The alder pup seems to have a lot to say at the moment. Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, would you, did you make the motion to approve Resolution number, okay. Was there a second on it? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
A second in from the Alderman from the twenty-eighth. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution one forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Carter, Or Hands Real Estate LLC in the City of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the seventh, you are recognized on Resolution one forty-one.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to place Resolution, what is it, one forty-one in the HUDs Committee.
Second.
Second.
It's moved by the Alderman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth to send Resolution one forty-one to HUDs. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Madam Clerk, please send Resolution one forty-one to HUDs.
Oh, noted. Resolution one forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, Fire Department Promotions.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution one forty-five.
If I could, could I have the clerk read the resolution?
Madam Clerk, could you please read Resolution number one forty-five?
Resolution forty-five, Fire Department Promotions. Whereas the City of St. Louis Fire Department has not conducted promotion exams for department members in nine years. And whereas in two thousand and seventeen, the City of St. Louis settled a lawsuit, Green versus City of St. Louis, brought by one hundred and forty black St. Louis firefighters alleging that the two thousand and thirteen promotion exams for captains and battalion chief was racially discriminatory. And whereas the settlement agreed, I'm sorry, the settlement agreement promised a comprehensive overhaul of the promotion proceedings, including commitments by the city to generate a new list of fire department members that are eligible for promotion to captain and battalion chief, not to delay promotions from the two thousand and thirteen promotion list until further promotion exam is given, and to use its best efforts to conduct the promotion exam by December of two thousand and eighteen. And whereas the city, the city, the city has yet to fulfill the commitment it made in two thousand and seventeen settlement agreement, and now seventeen St. Louis Fire Department captains have filed a motion asking the court to enforce the settlement agreement, arguing the city has unlawfully ignored the agreement. And whereas the city's reasons for its delay in meeting its commitments under the settlement agreement are unclear. And whereas the city has contracted with a testing company to conduct the promotion test, but has not taken steps to implement the new promotion process. And despite this, two firefighter, this fire department members from two thousand and thirteen list of eligible candidates were recently promoted, one to deputy fire chief and the other to captain without, from the city. And whereas, the city's unreasonable delay in satisfying its commitment under the settlement agreement must end. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, the City St. Louis Department of Personnel, Department of Public Safety, and the St. Louis Fire Department to act together in good faith to meet the city's commitment under the settlement agreement and immediately develop and implement a new promotion process, conduct a promotion test, and without further delay, promote the members of the St. Louis Fire Department that are on the two thousand and thirteen promotion list. Introduce this eighteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-two, by the Honorable Joseph Bacaro, twenty-third Ward Alderman.
So I actually see someone with their hand up, so I didn't know. Otherwise, I was just gonna ask to refer that to the public safety. But out of courtesy, I guess, Alderwoman Davis has.
Yes. Alderwoman Davis, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Madam President. I wouldn't be able to sleep tonight if I didn't make this public statement. It is appalling that we have not adhered to the rules and regulations of the law, of the federal law, that these people have not received their promotions and their increase in pay. I encourage them to use those laws on their behalf. We are irresponsible in this action, and we should be held accountable. And I would definitely, if they don't know how, they can call me and I'll tell them how. Because this is wrong on every level. I don't care what it is that we still need to do, which again is irresponsible and lacking of accountability on our part as far as having the appropriate things in order, which we have had over ten years to get it there. So I am definitely, definitely supporting these people getting their promotions, they're doing the job. See, that's another federal law that we are abusing. We have people doing work in a different classification, and we're not paying them for it. And we're gonna owe them a lot of back pay, and they need to go after their money and get their promotions. Thank you.
I think the Alderman from the twenty-third needs to make a motion to send it to committee, and then we can have discussion.
Well, you know, that was my original plan.
Okay.
I could just ask for your name as consent and go from there if, if, if Madam President, if you disagree with that, then I'm fine sending it to committee, otherwise either way, if it does it, if I don't get your name as consent, it's gonna go that way anyway.
I think it warrants being sent to committee, so we can bring some folks in to have some conversations.
Okay, okay. And we have, just, so you know, we have had, there's women that are on the promotion list, there's six.
Alderman, do you want to make the motion first, and then we can discuss it?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we send this to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
Right. Made a motion by the Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by the Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Alderman from the twenty-third, you may proceed.
Then, we've had multiple discussions, and it seems like this is gonna end up in court, but my next step is to do a board bill. There are actually minorities, there's women. I don't know that there are any women captains in the police department. This is denying at least three black women from becoming captain in the police department. It's important that we actually get these promotions done, and we start a new test process, out of fairness to all the firefighters. So, I mean, that's really, you know, we discussed this in committee, I will have this in my committee hearing next week. Anyone that wants to add their name to this resolution, please do so, you know, if you want to do it in bank, whatever, just let me. I'm happy with as many people jumping on this. I think we need to send a message. This should and definitely needs to happen. So other than that, I just
Thank you.
I'm open to whatever.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Madam President. I, just to clarify, I believe my colleague from the twenty-third met the fire department as opposed to the police department. And I would ask that my name be added to this resolution, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
I would like my name added to this resolution also. This has been an abuse of our authority for too long. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note. Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd also like my name to be added to the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please make note. Any further discussion? Right, seeing none.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam President. Could you add my name, please?
Yes. Alderwoman, or sorry, Madam Clerk, please make note of the Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, Alderwoman from the twenty-second.
Madam President, please add my name as well.
Right, that is the Alderwoman from the twenty-first. It looks like the Alderwoman from the twenty-second and the Alderwoman from the fourth would like to be added, as well as the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth and the Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Can I make a motion that we do it in bank?
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by the Alderman from the eleventh, that we have a motion to make it in bank. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Order, Madam President?
Yes.
I believe that with the motion made to make it in bank, the Alderwoman of the first raised her hand for discussion, and then waves.
Thank you for catching that. Thank you for catching that. Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, so first of all, I have a question about, once you are sending it to committee, if we're really supposed to be doing things in bank? I haven't read it, so I don't want my name added, not because I don't support it, it's just that I've been out sick. And when I put my name on things, I want it to reflect that I really support that. So I just would like for us to take that to committee where I can hear. I've been getting some of the emails, but I wasn't able to read all that stuff then, and so I just am opposed to that, and I still question if we can do it in bank after we're saying we're sending it to committee. I think that's something we should come back out and do, okay?
Agreed. Alderman from the twenty-third, would you like to rescind your motion?
Yeah, I'll rescind my motion.
And Alderman for the eleventh, would you want to take back your second?
Yes, Madam President.
All right. Any further discussion? We are discussing sending this to the Public Safety Committee at this moment. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please send resolution number one forty-five to Public Safety.
Oh, noted. Resolution one forty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Green, Special Committee on the Transition to Fourteen Ward.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you are recognized on resolution number one forty-six.
Thank you again, Madam President. I respectfully ask, um, one more time for resolution one forty-six to pass with unanimous consent.
Is there a second? Okay, I heard that from the Alderman from the twenty-third. Um, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you, uh, would you like to now make a, a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-six or one forty-six?
There's a hand up.
I see the hand up now, sorry about that. Recognize Alderwoman, looks like from the fourteenth, I think was first.
Point of order, Madam President?
Yes.
I think so, once the, once the request for unanimous consent has been made, then, um, the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth can make a motion on the bill and then, or on the resolution and then allow for discussion after that.
Okay, so Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, would you like to, uh, make a motion on the bill or on the resolution and then we will take discussion on that motion?
Point of order, point of order. Point of order.
Yes, Alderwoman from the.
Actually, when you do a motion for unanimous consent, that's supposed to, does anybody object to unanimous consent, which I was, okay?
Okay.
And if you don't get unanimous consent, then you can go to the motion, uh, afterwards. But I was objecting to unanimous consent, so.
Okay, my apologies, right.
No problem, this is really hard.
I did not hear the objection.
No, I didn't do it because I raised my hand to object and then you went right on, so, and, and this is hard. We're finding out you have a new viewpoint.
Yes, yes, trying to manage all of the sounds and the hands at the same time.
I understand, but I object to unanimous.
So the objection was on a unanimous consent.
Correct.
All right. Um, so Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth can either, um, she can ask to suspend the rules or, uh, we can take, uh, commentary or, or take discussion on, uh, the motion for unanimous consent. Or no? Alderwoman from the first.
So once you don't get unanimous consent, she does have to do a motion for, uh, and I'm having, what's the next thing that you go on? And then I wanted to make, to ask some questions, but once you don't have it, you go to, uh, suspension of the rules, okay?
Okay. Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, would you like to make a motion to suspend the rules? Or send it to committee, either or?
You know what? Because this conversation is so necessary, it needs to be had. It's, we're a little over five months away. And this, um, is an important, uh, committee that we need to go ahead and put together, continuing the work that Alderwoman Boyd and Alderwoman Navarro started. Year, tried to start rather years back, um, and in lieu of time and looking at some other things that might go on, I will go ahead and move it to, uh, committee.
Okay. Do you have a preference on committee?
Absolutely not. Anybody that would be, um, absolutely.
Let's slide it.
Goes to legislation.
Legislation. Alderman Volmer, is that all, all right with you?
Sure, I, I got nothing else to do these days.
Sounds good. Do we wanna hold, uh, do you still have matters for discussion, Alderwoman from the first?
Um, Madam, uh, President, no, that was, I was just, you know how I am about rules, so, that's all, um, I'm out. I wanted to go to committee, but I would ask the, uh, Chair if he would have a really speedy committee.
Uh, that efficiency is my, my middle name.
Sounds good. Thank you, Alderman from the tenth. Uh, Alderwoman from the nineteenth. I think you're muted.
There we go. So, uh, Madam President, thank you. I just wanted to give a, a little bit of background, uh, because in the Legislative Committee, uh, there was time spent uh, in reviewing all of this and there was a report that was submitted to the Personnel Committee. Uh, and probably we will have some joint meetings of rules and personnel as we move forward, but a lot of work was done. Uh, Alderwoman, uh, Navarro, Alderwoman from the eleventh ward, myself and others had input, but a lot of research is done. And a lot of the things that we need to discuss have been, uh, vetted quite a bit and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, um, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth made a motion to send to the Legislation Committee. Was there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, seconded from the Alderwoman from the eighth, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye. Alderwoman from the nineteen, okay, uh, your motion carries, uh, Madam Clerk, please send, uh, resolution number one twenty-six to the Legislation Committee.
Oh, noted, that was one forty-six, yes ma'am.
Or one forty-six, my apologies.
That's the first reading of resolutions.
All right, second reading of resolutions.
Resolution one as amended sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Tyus and President Green. Board of Aldermen Rules twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Legislative Session.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the first, you are recognized on the second reading of resolution number one as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. The first thing I would like to do, because I, I'm always uncomfortable when we have people who are no longer members of the Board of Aldermen um, and their names are on a board deal. So I would like to move to remove, uh, former President Reed and former Vice President Boyd's name from the resolution. If, please, and I make a motion in that, for that manner.
Second.
Right, it's moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded from the Alderman from the tenth, uh, that we re- remove uh, former President Reed and former Alderman Boyd from, uh, sponsorship of resolution number one as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, Sharita, uh, or Madam Clerk, please make note. Uh, Alderwoman from the first, you may proceed.
Okay, ma, Madam Chairwoman, I'm sorry, Madam President and members of the board, uh, I have a number of, uh, amendments, uh, that are in the drive. Um, last week, when I came forth with my seniority amendment, um, um, there were, the, the Alderwoman from the eighth said that she thought we had agreed to send it to committee so that we could do, uh, amendments. Um, I went back and looked at that, that is not what happened. What happened is there was an objection to my, uh, trying to get seniority and we sent it back about seniority. But I did, I, I do have some concerns that I wanna address and one of them that I've always, uh, had a concern about is the power of the president to, um, uh, and you haven't done this, so this is something that was written from previous presidents to put their thumbs on people. And then you don't get your committee chairs, you don't get anything, it's not, um, inclusive. Um, I've been taken off every committee there is, um, since I've been on board. Not because I didn't ask questions, but because I did come and ask questions.
Alderwoman?
Yes.
Pause just for one second. I don't think we had a second on the motion yet.
So, uh, I, I haven't done, I was just telling you I have the amendments, what they're about, but if you want me to do the, a motion to amend, because I have several of them, I can. I just wanted people to know what they're about, but if you want that amendment, I made that motion first, I can do that.
Uh, make the, the motion first and then we will, uh, once we have a second, then we can have discussion on what is before us.
Madam President, I move to amend board, I'm sorry, resolution number one with amendments two through nine.
Second.
Uh, with, made a motion to amend with, uh, amendments number two through nine, uh, made by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderwoman from the fourth, uh, Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. As I, as I was saying, um, through the years, I've been taken off Ways and Means, Hoods, Transportation.
Is there, I, I know the Alderwoman from the first said they were in the drive, but I'm not seeing them. Can, can we have some more specific direction on where those amendments are?
You're in folder number twenty.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, that's all I need.
Right, Alderwoman from the first, um, you may proceed.
Okay, so anyway, um, I, I always thought that was unfair. Um, people have a right to have opinions. Um, I try even when people are, uh, post me in committee hearings. Um, I don't believe that you should be able to just say you can't be on any committees or, uh, do the kind of things. When I say taken off, nobody took me off in that term, but I never could get back on those committees again. And I've been serving for twenty-two years and I served only, what, a year, a year and a half in hoods and Ways and Means. I've been taken off of, so, um, years ago, when we, I was sitting down with some other Aldermen, we came up with some things about what should the president be able to do. And what I do not believe that the president should be able to do is to appoint these, uh, committees by themselves. So, um, I went back and looked at what I had and I actually had these last week and I didn't bring them up because I was just gonna do my seniority, but after the Alderwoman from the eighth, uh, uh, so, uh, objected so much and wanted some things done, I agreed with her. So my First Amendment number two, um, it is to, um, rule number two. And basically all of these do the same thing. It says that instead of just having the president do things, that you have the president, the vice president and the floor leader and requires any two of them. And that way, you don't have people, uh, getting back at people. So, um, you have people that are working together, hopefully they're from different parts of the city. Um, and it's, and it only will, this rule is only for the remainder of, uh, our term we have now. And I think right now, in case people don't know it, um, I think there are a lot of people still reeling from what happened with the three Alder peo, the three Alder people that were removed, including the president. There's, uh, trust issues that are going on. Um, we're unstable right now. I'm still unstable. I got punished probably more than any of you. And I'm still unstable about what happened. I just wasn't expecting, uh, to see, uh, three black men across the paper repeatedly, uh, being indicted for taking bribes. And for those of you who I don't know it, I've had my big problems with the former president. Um, but we did try to sit down and work it out, but I do not think that this is a good idea. The power that the president gets except for, um, voting on E and A only comes from our rules. It does not come from, because you got elected. Our rules, even to if they want to hire staff, comes from our rules. If we don't allow the president to hire staff, then they can't, okay? Whoever that person is, if it was me, you couldn't. So, um, the first one just says that it requires two people to do, to appoint special and standing committees so that, um, there is for me, an involvement in that, especially in this case, for the remainder of the season. It would be me as vice president and, um, the Alderman from the tenth as the assistant, uh, floor leader. And that would, uh, kinda cover, uh, people from North Saint Louis and the caucus, it would cover Southwest Saint Louis. We have a president who is a progressive, uh, has been identified as a progressive. And I think that that is a, a fair way to do things than have a one person be able to go and negotiate things. And maybe even if you do not vote the way they want to, then you, you stay in, uh, committee hell, I think is what it is. So, uh, that is my first, uh, resolution one, rule two.
Right, um, need discussion. Alderwoman from the eighth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, with the Alderwoman from the first, yield for a question?
I sure will.
From the first, will you add, yield to a question from the Alderwoman from the eighth?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President. Um, Alderwoman, how do you see this voting procedure function? Is it going to be a public um, conversation? Is it going to be, you know, emails exchanged? How do, how, how functionally do you, do you view these changes, um, and these, these voting procedures to establish this new rule? How do you, how do you see this working?
Oh, I see it working as, uh, that you have inclusion and you sit down, that the leaders, including the assistant floor leaders, we meet regularly. We talk about things, we bring other people into it, um, you know, uh, you don't have somebody making a unilateral decision of who gets to be on a committee, um.
Okay.
So that's all, I see us as, uh, kind of working together and.
Okay, I mean, is there, I, I guess, but the, well, the question is more of like, functionally, how does that? Is, does, does the vote happen over a phone call? Is, does the vote happen over email? Does the vote happen in an in-person meeting? Is there a record of, you know what I'm saying? Like, if we're, if we're looking for an expanded procedure, what is, what does that procedure actually look like?
It looks like it can be over phone call, because if, for instance, I got up and said, oh, I have the agreement of the president and we're working together and the president says, no, we do not have an agreement, then that falls apart. So i- in this time of COVID, it's in person, it's on the phone, it's emails. Um, right now, what was happening is what? We didn't know anything until a list came out that says what committee she was on. So, um, I think that it can be a, a, a number of different ways. It doesn't change anything. Except for that now, you have, uh, different parts of the city and more of the leadership, because I would also include the assistant floor, uh, majority floor leader would be included. Um, you would have inclusion instead of exclusion.
Okay, thank you for answering the question. Um, I, I guess I'm still, the, there's a transparency piece here that, um, I, I understand that the, the rule change is designed to address, um, transparency. And I'm concerned that this doesn't, it, it doesn't enumerate how that would look. So if there would be a record kept of, you know, who is agreeing to what, um, and whether that's something that we could view from the outside um, or that the public could view, that type of thing. So the, the sort of record-keeping accountability of making this, making these types of decisions, uh, has me questioning that. So that's, uh, that's all I had to comment on right now. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, you know, I've had a opportunity to go through, you know, a, a number of the nine amendments that are suggested here. Um, I do have, uh, questions, you know, because I, I've had conversations in the past with my colleague from the first ward about, you know, some of these changes, um, but there is also some context around that, at least for me. Um, that, and I, and I actually introduced this rule change, uh, caucus the last time. It wasn't voted, um, but, um, or it wasn't adopted, I should say, but the, the context for me and, you know, supporting changes like this would be that the leadership of our board is elected by the board. Um, that is how most legislative bodies function when they're, um, electing leadership or selecting leadership to, uh, represent them as a body. Um, so Jefferson City and the State House, um, you know, the majority whip, the speaker, they're all, you know, they're all elected by the body. Um, you know, while the president of the Board of Aldermen is not elected by this body, you know, we should be framing this as, you know, the leadership of our body should be elected by our body. And, and, you know, that happens, like I said, down in Jefferson City, it happens and, you know, Washington DC um, with other legislative bodies, uh, similar in style to, you know, how we function. Um, you know, and I think to the Alderwoman of the first point, you know, in terms of that, uh, collaborative nature, uh, that she would expect from, you know, the leadership of this body, um, that happens more so when people are running, um, for that office, you know, or to hold that responsibility. Um, a- and so, you know, I've actually added a tenth amendment to holder here, um, that would do that. I, I think that that amendment should actually be adopted first, because I think it really does kind of uh, address some of the other, you know, um, concerns that might be out there. Um, but, you know, I've, I, I've, I also kind of struggle a little bit, Alderwoman, with doing this towards the end of the session um, versus at the beginning of a session when committees have already been assigned and picked and, you know, I, I, I'm just kind of trying to wrap my head around the mechanics of it as well. But, uh, you know, for me, I think that these would be something that I would be supportive of if we. if we first change the rule to rule number one, which is, you know, officers of the board, you know, being selected by the body. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Did you want me to reply or not?
Oh, no, I didn't ask to yield for questioning, but, you know, I, I mean, if you want to speak to that, you know, you're, you're welcome to. And, you know, if you have questions of me as well, you know, I'd be happy to yield.
Miss, Madam President, may I respond?
Yes, you may proceed.
Okay, first of all, our rules do provide for us to elect the officers of the board. I've been saying that for years. With, so, you know, that was our conversation about, and I won't say names, people who shall remain nameless, who didn't show up for their final days because they have been so mean to people, they were scared that people were going to get back with them. We already can elect our officers. We just cannot elect the President of Board. But because of that, the way, and people never sat down and read these where they should be. The only thing the President gets is you get to vote at E and A. The rest of it still comes from, and that's how we can have to negotiate from there being a President, a Vice President, a, a floor leader, Assistant Floor Leader. We even had for many years a Minority Floor Leader. And so you, because we had one Republican and we had a couple of independents. So our rules already provide for that.
So I, I guess I, I should have asked you to yield for questions here. And because otherwise, we have a slew of other folks that have their hands up first that need to be recognized before we have our second opportunity, per our rules. But rule number one specifically addresses the titles and selections of officers of the board. And I'll read it here. You know, "The President shall take office upon certification of the Board of Election Commissioners", which is obviously something that happened today. "And then the remaining officers of the board shall be appointed or shall be selected on the basis of continuous seniority amongst the Alderpeople." And then it references Article Four, Section Six of the City Charter, which is "The Vice President, Clerk, and other officers and employees of the Board of Aldermen, this Board shall choose from its membership a Vice President to act in case of absence or disability or failure to act on the President, and shall choose a clerk and may select any other officers or employees." And then it also references City Code 3.06-100, which is "The officers of the Board of Aldermen shall be a President who's elected by the qualified voters of the city." And it continues on to say, "A non-salaried Vice President, a Clerk, an Administrative Assistant Sergeant-at-Arm." So the City Code and the City Charter are silent on the actual selection process of the officers of the board. But our rules are very implicit with "The remaining officers of the Board shall be selected on the basis of continuing seniority amongst the Alderpeople." And that's the rule where I think, where I suggested this in caucus the last time, that we should strike continuous seniority and adopt a rule that they're elected by the body. And so that's really where I'm coming from. And again, I've added this amendment to the folder for further discussion at a later point in time. But wanted to put that, that context for me in perspective and out in the public domain.
Thank you, Alderman from the 25th. Alderman from the 24th?
Thank you, Madam President. As the Alderman from the 25th was discussing, one of the things that we talked about in caucus was electing leaders and then what had been kind of dubbed a snake draft on committee assignments. And for bringing the, the, those two amendments, several of us were called racist and told that we were usurping the power of the President. And, you know, I, I think that, as a result, I withdrew my motion and we did not proceed with, with those rule changes. I think that this is kind of changing horses midstream. As the Alderman from the 25th said, if we were going to do this, should, should I find myself back here in, you know, April or May when we caucus again, when this Board caucuses again? I think that that would be a, a great time to discuss all of these rule changes. And Alderwoman from the first, I was there with you last week when you proposed your seniority rule change. But I think when we're going to bring nine, now 10 amendments, I think that committee is the appropriate place to discuss that. I, I, I don't feel it's appropriate to vote on 10 amendments moments before the vote when people haven't seen them. I think that we should flesh this out in committee where we have a chance to have a more robust discussion. To the Alderman from the 25th's point, should we amend the rules to allow for electing of the, this body's leadership? I think that will color for a lot of people the way that they would like to vote on the first nine proposed amendments. And I think that that's why we, we should flesh this out in committee. Will the Alderman from the 7th yield for a question?
Yes.
Sure. Thank you, Alderman from the 7th. Would you be willing to have a relatively quick committee meeting to address these proposed amendments so that we could have the opportunity to, to have a robust committee discussion on these rather than having to vote on them, having only seen them for several minutes?
I mean, I'm happy to have a committee discussion, but candidly, you guys, we voted the rules out of committee last week. So I guess that would require someone to send it back to committee. We're here today. I don't know why we can't just have a discussion on the amendments and move forward accordingly. But if for some reason, you know, the rules were sent back to committee, I'll, I'll have a hearing.
Thank you. And, yeah. I don't have anything further. I continue to think that if we're going to have 10 amendments, that we should have a more robust discussion and more time with those amendments. It seems careless to, to, to make this drastic a change, only having several minutes to discuss. So at this point, Madam President, I would make a motion to send this to the Rules Committee.
Is there, there's been a motion made by the Alderman from the 24th to send Resolution Number One as amended to the Rules Committee. Is there a second? Is there discussion on the motion? I see a lot of hands up. I'm not sure what pertains to sending it to committee versus what contain, what pertains to discussion on the bill. If you are wanting to discuss the resolution, could you put your hand down? If your discussion is on the motion to send to committee, could you please keep your hand up? All right. Alderwoman from the 19th, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask the Alderperson from the first ward to yield for questions. I would like to ask the Alderwoman from the first ward.
Sorry, I was muted. Alderwoman from the first, would you yield for questions from the Alderwoman from the 19th?
Yes, Madam President, I will.
Right, Alderwoman from the 19th, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. Alderwoman, one of the things that I wanted to ask you, because of the nature of the original resolution, would you be amenable for us to go ahead and vote on that? And then we'll deal with the other issues in committee with more time?
No, not at this point. I'm not. And I'll tell you why. The reason why it seems like it's nine amendments is because I'm obsessive. Okay, that's the word I'm going to say. So they're really all the same committee. I mean, they're all the same amendment. It basically puts the President, Vice President, and the, the floor leader in a joint commitment to doing things. I just did it for every line that was in the, in the rules. That way, people couldn't say it was one long thing they couldn't read. So you can go to Rule Two, Line Five, it says the same thing. Rule Seven, it says the same thing. So they're just all adding pretty much, except for, and I'll tell you the one that it doesn't, that's a little different. It is Amendment Six, I think it is. But all of that, and I would go through that, they're basically saying, we want to work together. We do not want it to be one person. And I also want to say, if you don't mind, that, that changing in the midstream, that's exactly what we're doing with putting a new President in the middle of a session like this. I'm looking for stability in our, right now. It's a lot of people that do not feel stable, who, who have a lot of issues that they don't feel good about. I originally was, as you can see, it's Amendment Two through Nine, I had these last week. I was just going to do my seniority. But since the Eighth Ward and some other people voted no and said, oh, we want to bring something, which I'm waiting for them to bring, because I said to them last week, why haven't you brought anything? Why haven't you brought anything up? I actually worked with them on some amendments, so they should have them because this is where I got some of mine from. I just pulled up the amendments that they were thinking that was okay for the former President. So I don't like people who are hypocrites, who think it's okay for one person, but now I got my guy in here, I'm not, okay? These are the same rules I was going to support if we could have done it with the former President, okay? This, to me, is a much more stabilizing rule and it brings a lot more people into the fold of things so that one person doesn't get to do their agenda and especially doesn't get to punish people.
Well, one of the things you just said I can agree with, as I was reading them, I probably would have only had two amendments because, as you said, the, the, most of them are pertaining to the same thing. So it could have just been one sentence that included those positions that should have collective voice. And, and then the second, another amendment would have dealt with the other issue. So it, I really, I really want to make sure that we're not, we're not doing too much at this moment.
I understand.
And I really wanted to make sure that, I thought in my mind, what I heard last week was, if nobody came back with anything, and nobody did, that we would go ahead and pass the original resolution to re, take out that word "continuous service", and then we would move forward to looking at, in that Rules Committee, some things that we probably need to change based on where we will be next spring. Because there's, there's absolutely no reason to change anything now. We would look like circus idiots if we were changing all committees right now and changing all committee leaders right now. The city, the city constituency would probably really pack their bags and leave. So I'm hoping that there's some way for us to just handle the business of last week and make a determination with some confidence from the Madam President and also the Chair of Rules to move forward and how we deal with all the others. And so I, I just want to ask for consideration on that. That's all.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the 19th. Alderwoman from the 17th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would just say that, I'm in agreement with the Alderwoman of the 19th. And may I make a motion? I'm sure regarding that.
Sorry, you, you are very garbled. I am not hearing.
Okay, I'm, I'm in agreement with the Alderwoman from the 19th. And I, I can know if I can make a motion regarding these amendments.
What emotion, what motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. My motion is to vote on this.
Point of order.
Order, point of order. Aren't we discussing a motion now?
Yeah.
We are, we have a motion on the floor.
Correct.
Correct.
If you repeat that motion then.
The motion on the floor is, it was a motion to bring Resolution Number One as amended in front of us and then adopt Amendments Number Two through Nine to Resolution Number One as amended.
Point of order. I thought that the motion in front of us at the moment was a motion to refer back to committee.
Correct.
My apologies.
Okay, it's been convoluted this morning.
Yes, it has. All right, so the motion is to refer back to committee that is before us at the moment.
For Two through Nine.
The, the motion before us is to refer Resolution Number One as amendment to the Rules Committee. So we are taking discussion on that motion. Do you have discussion on the motion?
No, it's not.
All right. Alderwoman from the first?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I guess I remember a little differently from than the Alderwoman from the 19th because otherwise I would have just pushed through with my, I had plenty of votes for my seniority. The reason why I held it and told them to bring it is because they said they had other things that they wanted to bring. And I said, okay, I will make a compromise. If you, you got something else, bring it. Which nobody had spoken to me or said they had anything else. I didn't say I wouldn't have anything else. I already had these things. I just wasn't going to do them. And I, I only did it, so now I'll tell you the rest of the story. As soon as I got off of the Zoom call, I started hearing from people about certain members of this Board of Aldermen saying that, oh, this is what's going to happen and this is going to get changed and this is going to get changed. And so I think it's my responsibility for being here for a long time to kind of put a brakes on that and say, we need to hold off on that, okay? We need to, there's no reason to change really most of anything. I'm not saying the President might not have a person or two, but there's no reason to change these committees or ask people to step down or do any of those things because most of us are very shaky about what has happened. That's the word I'll use. So I brought the rest of them forward because of what I heard through the grapevine from some of the people who could not bring themselves to vote for seniority and can, and it seems to want to change everything. And that has been my experience with the, the people who pushed through Proposition D, which made us have to waste a couple of hundred thousand dollars to have a second election that we should not have had. And I told them from the beginning, it was not well-written. This will just put into effect something that says the President, the Vice President, and the Floor Leader will work together. And there will not be anything going off and that we're going to remove all the people from the committees, which there is nothing in our rules that provides that anyway, or that we're going to ask people to step down or we're going to pack committees and things like that. That will make it very hard for us to, to carry on and have a, a stable Board of Aldermen. And that only was submitted this week because I was told they were going to bring more stuff, which they didn't bring, and more. And also because I had heard it out in the streets. I have people who are called progressives that are friends because I was with the progressives for many years and got my punishments because of it. And I didn't think what the former President was doing is right. And if the new President is going to come and do that, I won't think that that is right either. And I find it interesting that some of the people who are opposed to this, this is not different. I'll pull this off of my, off of something that I had written up when working with the progressives. This is something that we had talked about. But of course now, I have a friend that used to be the Fourth Ward Alderwoman. She would say, it always depends on whose ox is getting gored. When people think they got their person in, now they don't care about being fair to people, okay? Now they just want what they want. This is the same thing. I haven't changed anything. That's why it's called Amendment Two through Nine. Again, you are right, I shot together. But then I would have had some people who said, well, this is too big. So I wanted to make sure I was transparent in saying, this is exactly where it is in the bill and this is what it's saying. And I will stick with that. And that's why I wanted to get it done because if you send it to committee, we're, we're never going to get 20 votes to do anything like this. And so everybody will be, oh, no, this is why you shouldn't do it. This is why you shouldn't do it. We can just have the President and the, say that she's not going to be changing all these rules and make a. she's not going to be changing all these rules and make a, a, a promise. That could be done right now, okay? Because other than that, if you're gonna change committees, I'm for not having that happen. And I wasn't for it for the previous person either. So I'm not picking sides. I'm not talking about race. I'm not talking about sex. I'm talking about, is this a good thing to do? And I want to go on further to say, no matter how the alderman from the, uh, twenty fifth looks at it, we always had the power to elect our own officers. We never had to leave continuous in there. We never had to leave seniority in there. We always have had that power. And I've stood up on this floor. If I have to, I will go back and say, um, that I've told people, we don't have to go along with who that person was. I'm trying not to say names. Who is gonna be the vice president. I've said it over and over again. Of course, I was on that, working with the people now who are opposed to this. So I am opposed to sending it back to committee. Um, everybody always thinks that that's okay. Um, we'll get to you, um, some other time. Um, I'm, I'm not going to send it back to committee. Now you can vote these amendments down, that's fine. Um, and that'll be fine, but I don't want to send it back to committee because then I'll go to the original, um, um, amendment that we've already made. And I will take my seniority, but I think we will have, uh, failed in showing that we really do want, um, change in stuff, because I'm still on the same place I was from the prior administration. I didn't like it. We had many conversations about it. And I, I, I still didn't get any committees and I only got them because the alderman from the twenty third, I got to be on public safety because the alderman of the twenty third had to insist that I get on it. But other than that, you will see my, I have no committees with the most seniority except for streets. I'm not on hoods. I'm not on any of those things. And I don't think that's right. And I think that we should, uh, start with a new president. We only got a four months and a half left. And so we're not really doing anything. We're not rocking the boat. We're saying keep the boat stable and fair.
Alderwoman from the eighth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I rise in opposition to sending it back to committee at this point. Um, I agree with the alderwoman from the nineteenth that, um, the, what I assumed was happening, uh, last week was that the, the rule change that passed, um, the amendment to the rules that I was happy to support, I supported every other time we had the opportunity to vote on it, um, as a board, um, was, it was either that or there was going to be discussion in the Rules Committee this week about amendments. Um, and that, as that did not happen, and I can speak, uh, further to my own, uh, questions last week about that. Um, but I, I fully support the rules as amended as they are in front of us at the moment. Um, and so I don't, I, I would be happy to send, to send that up for a vote, uh, today and then we can move on. And if there are, if these further rule changes, these further ten rule changes, um, need to be in effect, then that's, that's something we can, we can discuss. We can vote up or down here. Um, but I, my comments last week to clarify, um, because I've been mentioned a number of times here, was that as a part of the Rules Committee, when we had started meeting last year, there was conversation about the clerk having rule changes that were going to be brought in front of us for discussion, um, to help, I believe, with the transition down to fourteen. I don't know the specifics of those. I don't know that those rule changes, um, were ever fully fleshed out. They did not make it in front of the Rules Committee. Um, but I didn't have that information straight away on me on Friday because it was a bit of surprise that we were pulling ru- resolution number one out of committee. So if I had had a little bit more warning that this, the move was coming, I could have verified that information. Um, so that was, that was my, uh, attempt to leave the rules in committee last week because I, I wasn't able to verify that that set of rule changes had not made it over to the Rules Committee. So, um, I have, I guess I have, I have some more to say on the, on the underlying amendments, um, but on, I will stick to just the motion to refer back to committee, to committee at this point, and I'll be opposed. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the eighth. Alderman from the twelfth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I would just like to, to quickly speak on the, uh, motion before us, uh, as I lower my hand. Uh, I, I, while I rise in support of sending it back to committee, and the reasons for doing so is because the Alderwoman of the first told us last week that she would only be presenting one amendment. Alderwoman, we can go back and roll the footage and I'll make a public apology, but I want to be very clear that, because I believe it was the Alderwoman of the thirteenth, we even asked you to yield to confirm that this is what was before us. I'm concerned that the Alderman of the seventh presents it as, as chairman of the Rules Committee, presents it as, we've already discussed this in committee. We've already done this. And yet in this very meeting, early on, the Alderwoman of the first was accidentally unmuted, was on a phone call with presumably the clerk of the board, asking him or informing him that he, uh, she would be sending nine amendments to put in the folder. That was not heard in committee. Those were not heard in committee. This is a power upset and frankly expediency, uh, that I have not seen from my colleagues at this board, be they progressive or otherwise. And I want to speak to that too. Alderwoman of the first, I have the floor, please. Thank you. Thank you, Alderwoman. In my time at this board, in, in regards to the motion before us, there's always been calls for transparency. This is not a call for transparency. There's always been party lines within one party unnecessarily. So, I mean, you want transparency now, right? And yet there's gonna sneak in nine amendments plus the tenth from the Alderwoman of the twenty fifth, which has also not been put for, uh, a formal discussion in public hearing. So I'm also upset about that. Under the guise that, well, we've already discussed it. That feels disingenuous. That is not transparent. These were not discussed. Alderwoman of the first, Alderwoman of the twenty fifth, you both have my cell phone numbers. I've tried to call both of you in the past to discuss things and not receive responses, uh, and you're not the only ones, so please don't feel that I'm only calling you out, but this is absolutely ridiculous. And I ultimately can no longer support anything except sending it back to committee because it is not transparent. That is a bold-faced lie. It is not transparent to swoop in during the procession of this meeting and say that, oh, well, one, now we need to change these committee, uh, assignment rules. When just eleven days ago, on November seventh, one forty-nine PM, the day before the general election, the clerk of the board sent us an updated list of committee assignments. I mean, we're, we're acting like this doesn't happen. So I, again, I believe there is merit in the amendments before us. I am very upset at the disrespect that is being presented not only to this board, Alderwoman of the first, but to our city by claiming that this is transparent. This is a move for transparency. And Alderman of the seventh, as chairman of the Rules Committee, for saying that these were already discussed. And please correct me if I'm misinterpreting your previous statement in this debate, because they have not been discussed. Because in this meeting itself, we know that the Alderwoman of the first had them sent to the clerk to be introduced on the floor. We know that it, it's just, it's incredibly frustrating that we're allowed to say, oh, this is transparency, this is transparency, this is X, Y, Z, this is good governance, when it is anything but. So with that, I stand in support of sending it back to committee. Um, I think it is ridiculous that we now suddenly have such a grand concern with transparency, a grand concern with good governance, and a grand concern with our rules. Uh, and with that, I, I yield back.
Thank you, Alderman from the twelfth. Alderman from the twenty-third, you are recognized.
Just a couple of things. First off, whenever we do our rules, it's usually not in public. And I do remember from the conservative members trying to put rules in place and, and of course, I agree, I forget who said they, said they were called racist, but because they tried to put rules in place to take any power that the last president of the board, and they wanted to do very similar things and they, and, and they were very in favor of doing that. Um, you know, I, I voted against that. I felt like the president shouldn't have the authority to do whatever. But, you know, uh, and I probably wouldn't have gone along with all of this today, but I actually now kind of go along with the Alderwoman from the first because it seems to me that, you know, the, the same group that was saying, gee, the president has too much power to do all these things. And, and, and our, our, our new president uh, was part of the ones that felt that the president had too much power and that there needed to be changes in the rules. You know, and, and again, I voted against it then, and I don't know, I don't know that taking the power away from the president is the right thing to do, but you know, after hearing how this is going, I, I'm gonna kind of, kind of lean with the Alderwoman from the first. My other concern is if this goes to committee and comes out and somebody can tell me, but right now it takes fifteen votes to make changes. If it goes to committee and comes out, I do believe it takes two-thirds, which is a much larger uh, number. Somebody can correct me on that. Um, and so to say, gee, you know, our, our, our meeting is transparent, I've never, uh, the caucus, the caucus meetings, you know, where we make our rules, that's always been done since I've been here in private. You know, uh, so anyway, I just, somebody can let me know about the two-thirds if, if we put it in the committee, that it doesn't take simple fifteen, where it would take fifteen today. And if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I do believe including our new president was in favor of taking power away from the president of the board and had all kinds of new rules uh, back then. And, and maybe you can correct me on that too, uh, someone, uh, because we're all at the meeting, we're all at the committee hearing, and not all of us, some of us were not elected. And to the point that the president put, made changes to the committees, he didn't take anyone off of any committees. He added people that were newly elected to the committees, so they could actually serve their constituents. He didn't say, gee, I'm gonna remove, you know, X, Y, Z. You know, I will say in defense of, of the new president, we sat down and she asked me, you know, where I'm at. She did ask if I had issues with adding, you know, someone to public safety, which I did not. Um, she asked me if there was ones that I would be willing to step off of, and I had no problem with that either. But what's funny on this, where I just have to sit back and kind of laugh about or not laugh, is the same group that are saying, oh no, the president should have all the power. It's the same group that was saying, oh, the president has too much power and we gotta change that. And what happens three months from now if someone runs against our current precedent and wins? And it's someone more conservative? Then do we go back in committee and say, oh gee, you know what? Yeah, maybe these rules are good. I just don't understand how the same group that was so against the president and having all this power back then is so far having the president have all the power now. And then what happens when we get another new president? You know, if we get another new president. You know, we always assume that the same people are gonna be here next year. And that's really not always the case. So I, the only correction I would ask is, is it gonna, if it goes to committee and comes out, does it require two-thirds then to change the rules after it comes out of committee versus the simple fifteen? I'm, I'm getting different head shakes. Yes, no, maybe. Uh, I do believe that's the case. And I, I couldn't swear to it, but I believe it. Um, the, 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 I, I think the Alderwoman from the first may have, but know the rules.
My, my understanding, we still, if it goes back to committee, is still, the rules still would never have been adopted by the full board. And so it would still be under, it would still require only fifteen because we had never adopted them. If we were to adopt them and then send it back to committee, um, for review and then want to amend the, the rules once they've already been adopted by the, uh, the full board, then it would take that two-thirds.
So, okay, I, I think I understand. So if we adapt, well, I, I'll, I'll just sit back and listen. So, okay, but thank you.
Um, we are still, want to make sure that we, we are on the motion to refer back to committee. Uh, Alderwoman from the first, you have further discussion on that motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, Madam President. I'm gonna have to get used to president versus chairwoman. Okay. First of all, I want to address the alderman from the twelfth, calling me a bald-faced liar. I, I take exception at that. And I always take exception when people who don't know what they're talking about call people bald-faced lies. So you are now back even further behind because you don't know what you're talking about. The alderman from the twenty-third first addressed the first thing. The reason why the president, the, uh, the former president put out a new list is because we have new members that have to be assigned. So that's one thing that's checked off, okay? So when we, these members had been here for what, a month or so, and they had not gotten a committee. So that's what happened. Um, you talked about never seeing this on the floor, because you just got here. I've been here thirty years. This has been on the floor. In fact, the people that you hang out with were the people who did this on the floor. Um, I want to suggest that, uh, the alderman from the twenty-third is a little wrong. We had a meeting of the Democratic Caucus. We caucused, which is all Democrats. Uh, and we talked about what rules we were gonna pass, but we actually don't pass them until the floor of the Board of Aldermen, which we usually do that first Tuesday of, I mean, sorry, the third Tuesday of April. We've been doing that for a long time. I would suggest people like yourself, Alderman from the twelfth, who don't know what you're talking about and just got here, not call me a bald-faced liar, because that makes me want to tell you who you are, um, but I'm not. Um, and when you say you've never seen anything on this floor, I'm gonna repeat what I told the former alderman from the twenty-first. We're so lucky that you just got here and you want to tell us what's happened in the last thirty years. But I think I will go along with my memory and these people who are sitting here with me, because again, your posse was the people who were on the floor trying to change things. Ask them about it, okay? Um, expect, and you're talking about amendments. Once, um, board bill or resolution comes out of committee, the correct procedure is to do amendments on the floor. That is why we have perfection, not third reading with board bills, so we can still do amendments on the floor. That is why we have perfection. That's the same thing we do with resolutions. Again, I wish you people would sit down and open up the rules, and sometimes people get them wrong. But when you get ready to call somebody a bold-faced liar, that is who you must be yourself. Because I am not a bold-faced liar. And I think if you ask anybody who served with me, I have taken the position against my own position with rules. When, um, people have tried to get me, uh, to say things, then I would say, I don't agree with the former president, but I don't think we have a point on that. And I was on the other side. I've let, uh, hearings come to my committee when I totally disagreed with what was going on. I'm not a bold-faced liar. And I don't appreciate that. And any chance you can, you do little things to make me know that I was really wrong in trusting and believing in you, because a bold-faced liar is a term you shouldn't be using on me or anybody else without making sure. I never said I was not gonna bring anything else. I said, that is what I had now. If you will again, look at, these things are numbered two, three, four, five, because I had them last week. I decided not to do it, but when someone tells me, well, we're gonna try to get some more, I don't sit there and go, oh, you could bring some more, but I'm not going to try to bring anymore. If you guys wanted to bring, and I'm talking the eighth ward, the twelfth ward, the thirteenth ward, or anything else who voted no, then you should have brought them. And I said that to the eighth ward before when she said, well, he didn't have a meeting. And I told you, so I hope you guys went and looked up. That to have a meeting does not name just the chair. And I told you then, that you can write a letter to the chair and you can, um, uh, then the majority of the members can have a meeting. Also, you talk about not shopping around to you. I have not gotten anything from any member who said they had other things that they wanted to change. They didn't come shop to me. They didn't come talk to me. They just put their things out there and put them up for a vote. So if you want to do that, don't call out the alderman from the twenty-fifth and, and myself, because this is the time that you do amendments when it's out of committee. You do them on the floor. I want to also suggest to you all that you read the rules so that you will know there is something called a committee of the whole. You can have a committee of the whole and run it right here. Now, of course, you probably don't know. I'm not, if, I wanna, I'm not talking to the new people who didn't put their foot in their mouths. I'm talking to people with their foot in their mouths. There is something called a committee of the whole. And you can have hearings like this right on the floor, okay? Now, many of you are probably not, uh, experienced that, but I have, because I've been around. I know you guys don't want experience anyplace. I know you guys don't want experience any place until it's to your benefit. But it actually is good to talk to some people who know what they're talking about, okay, or whoever experienced thing. So, sitting here and talking about the rules out in the public, um, is not a big rule change, and it's not anything that I came and made up. It's the things that I got working with the progressives. So it's a funny thing that I'm now at the same spot I was when I was working with the progressives. Now I'm working with other groups, cuz I wanna work with progressives and the conservatives and the South Side and the North Side. Now all of a sudden, oh, my God, where did this come from? It came from you. That's where it came from. And not you, Mr. Stevens, cuz you were Alderman Stevens, you were not here. But it came from a group called the progressives, okay, that I worked with. So don't act like this is something new. The Alderman from the twenty-third is exactly right, and they got on the floor, they tried to change things. I was part of trying to change things. So don't get mad at me when I don't want to change uh if, when I don't wanna say, well, now that we got your guy or your girl in in uh office, well, now we don't want that. I exactly want the same thing. So I'm probably the most stable person of all, because I have not changed what my position is. And I really wanted you all to bring some of the other things that we talked about. Because if you remember when we were in caucus, I was up there, in fact, the Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you were up there standing by the president when we went over into, I don't know what, me, we were at uh Union Hall.
Could we please keep this on the motion to send a committee?
I will, if, but they, you let them, let me say this, Madam President, I would not be addressing this except you let them say all of this stuff. So I will try to do it. I'm wrapping it up now. I set, but you set me up to talk to the Alderman from the twenty-fourth and say, well, we're not gonna get this passed. And so we didn't. So don't act like I made these things up. That's all I'm saying. I didn't make them up. I was with you. I still stand on, bring some more. I can, um, for those of you all women, you send it back. Well, I tell you, again, I'll tell you, I've waited twenty-something years for my seniority, because I got cheated and my members uh in my community was not allowed to vote. So you guys just dismiss if it's not anything you want. And now, um, the Alderman from the eighth is like, oh, yeah, well, now I'll be with you for your seniority. Uh huh, okay. No, I don't wanna send the rules back, because I don't think you're being um truthful in what your intent is. And then if I send the rules back and the chair packed the uh the uh committee, rules committee, I may never see it. So I'm not naive enough to do that. I'm opposed to that. Because this, you'll pack the committee. I have the votes, but I still want to see even more things done. Um, I will leave it on informal calendar. If you guys wanna, you still can meet and talk about what you wanna do and bring back some things. I would leave it again, but I'm not sending it back to committee, and I am opposed to that. And that's how you can do it. And then bring something. I wanna see some work. I wanna see some work. Everybody says, oh, no, we can't do this, we shouldn't do this. Oh, it's it's the Alderman from the seventh fault. But none of you all have done any work. Where is it written down? If you really want these things, I get so sick and tired of people jumping on the black Alderman about, oh, you wanna do this? And you always, this is the same little group of people, five or six people, you gotta know for anything the black Alderman do, okay? So no, I'm not, I do not wanna send back to committee, and I ask people to vote against this amendment. And if you really wanna do something, I'll hold it another week. And again, do some work and put it in pencil to the paper. And if you haven't do done that, stop talking to me. And then don't call me when you're in trouble, hold on, woman, and can you help me? Don't call me anymore, okay? Ald Alderman Rice, when the clerk said you couldn't hear your bill, I stayed up all night uh documenting why you could hear your bill, didn't I? Yes, you know I did. I stand up for people when I get in trouble. So if you're not willing to do the work, then don't get mad at me, cuz I got the same things. And see, I will now pull up and show you guys all the stuff that they said they were for, okay? That's what I want you to understand. So don't be a hypocrite, cuz I'm not. And I am opposed to sending this uh resolution back to committee.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized.
When I am doing the work, Alderwoman, I I, you know, suggested amendment. I don't, you know, wanna think that I I'm not trying to be collaborative here or, you know, work with colleagues, but um, you know, I I appreciate your offer to put this on the informal while others are are doing that work too. Um, but I I I just wanna make sure that I'm not being called out specifically in that respect either. Um, but I do, um, I'm I'm not gonna support sending this back to committee at this point in time. I I think, um, you know, I, there are a nu- number of amendments that are on the agenda. I'm not uh planning to support them at this point, but you know, if the Alderwoman is willing to put them on the informal um for further discussion, I I'm willing to continue doing the work, Alderwoman. I appreciate you, um, you know, doing that. And I think I I've demonstrated that I'm willing to to do the work here as well with you. Um, so, you know, happy to continue those those conversations if if you're open to that. Um, and if if that's the case, then I'll vote no um with, well, so will the Alderwoman from the first yield for questions?
Would the Alderwoman from the first yield to questions from the Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
Yes, Madam President, I will.
Alderman twenty, from the twenty-fifth, you can proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, and and thank you, Alderwoman. Um, I just wanna, you know, uh, kind of have, ask you the question. So, you know, as I've just mentioned, you know, I'm willing to continue doing that work uh with you. Um, would you be willing to work with me, you know, uh, on additional amendments as necessary uh and hold this on the informal? I know you already stated it, but I I just feel like I should probably ask the question.
Um, Alderman, yes, I will. In fact, if you will look back last week, I told the people who were talking about doing rules, I would work with them. You and I have always worked together about rules. You know I was on the other side and getting punished, you know that, okay? So I don't have a problem in working with it. I have a problem who don't do it, people who don't do anything, and then they run and whine like I'm doing something different, okay? So I do actually keep things for a long time. So I'm gonna pull up the rest of the suggestions we had now. But I will put it, I'm not gonna, it doesn't, you don't have to be a committee, you know that, to write uh amendments, right?
I I put one in the the folder myself, this, you know, so
That's all I'm saying.
I understand that.
I I wanna say I wasn't calling you out. You're the one person that did come and bring something else. So I was not calling you out.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I I just wanna make sure, you know, I I know that it's frustrating for some colleagues, you know, when amendments are debated on the floor, because um, sometimes they feel like they don't get to ask the same questions or, you know, there's expert testimony that usually is involved in in committee hearings that we don't otherwise have on the floor of the Board of Aldermen. These are our rules. So, I mean, we should all be pretty familiar with them already, um, and if we have suggestions that we wanna make, um, I I see no reason why we couldn't do that from the floor, um, you know, as we're doing currently. But I, I, you know, I I would say, you know, the the caveat to that Alderwoman is there's a ton of other amendments that, you know, I I would like to see happen. I don't know if it makes sense to do it right now, but since you've opened the door, I would, you know, love to have that discussion with you, and, you know, we'll reach out to following the meeting and and um, you know, with that, you know, I'll just kind of say that I'm not planning on voting uh to send it to committee. You know, if the Alderwoman's willing to put it on the informal and continue the the work on the the amendments here. So, thank you.
Can I reply? Alderman?
Will the Alderwoman for the first yield?
Yes.
Will you yield to the Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
I, Ald Alderwoman, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to uh reply.
So Alderman, I'm not going to do this indefinitely, okay? So now this will be another week. So when I come back, I'm not gonna be open to that, because you do have to sit down um, and you have to do the work. And for those people who just wanna complain, I'm not hearing that, okay? I I I think this is a good time. Again, I want to keep stability in the board. I do not want for people to feel there are a lot of people that were on different sides of issues of things. And I, you, I'm on the same side I've always been, so which is that we need to make sure that people are protected at this Board of Aldermen, and these are our rules. So we don't have any experts necessarily to come. Um, and we, um, we have talked about these before, maybe the few new people. But other than that, many of us have agreed on many of the same things. So I don't have a problem with you bringing more, okay? And I'll, but after, when we come back, I will, I will not be entertaining that.
Sounds good. I I thank you for yielding, and you know, with that, I I preserve the balance of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. So Alderwoman from the first, are you putting this on the informal calendar, or should we continue with discussion on the motion?
So you know, I hate to to cut off debate from people. Uh, so these last three people, I just want them to be able to say stuff, so I I I'm not gonna put it on informal till they have a chance to say what they need to say.
Okay, uh Alderwoman from the seventeenth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. Uh, I would just like to mention, uh, and I appreciate this. This has become a robust discussion on board, and I appreciate it all. I also want to acknowledge all the women from the first to um being able about putting this onto the formal calendar. Uh, I think that that we should have a discussion within this week, and I just acknowledge again the robust discussion and um that uh Alderman from the first have been um uh supportive of putting it onto the informal calendar, since I think that's a great compromise. So I appreciate that.
Thank. Uh, Alderwa- or Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I know that the the Alderwoman for uh from the first and myself sometimes bump heads on the floor and disagree uh on things, and that that's what we're here to do. I I hope that she continues to know that I have a lot of respect for her and her willingness to to come to compromise on issues uh so that it's a a win-win situation rather than win-lose situations. Uh, will the Alderwoman from the first yield for a question?
Uh, Alderwoman from the first, will you yield to a question from the Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Yes, Madam President, I will.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, uh, and thank you, Alderwoman from the first. Uh, it it sounds like at this point uh you're willing to put this on the informal calendar to uh allow for more time for discussion on these nine amendments, I guess ten amendments now, that uh have been uh brought. Uh, the Alderman from the seventh's comments are uh well-received, that, you know, we we can have this uh discussion uh here on the floor. Uh, again, I I continue to think that the Alderman from the twenty-fifth amendment uh is important because it will color the way I think a lot of people uh may vote on the uh the the nine amendments that you have brought. Um, but if if you are willing to put this on the informal calendar, I I'm certainly happy to withdraw my motion uh if if that's the case.
Um, um, there're not gonna be nine amendments anymore. I'm listening to the Alderman from the nineteenth. I say it, I am that person that wants to make sure people see the transparency. So I will put them all together, because six of them are the very same amendments, it's just a different rule. They're not nine amendments. It's like six amendments and then uh two other. It it might be seven amendments and another one. So um, I will then combine them. I just didn't, I don't like to fool and trick people into their votes, okay? I want them to know exactly where everything is, and so they won't be, I will re uh take those amendments back and redo them, okay? So I want you to know that, but they'll be the same thing. And yes, I I I will put it on the informal, but not anymore. But when we come back, I will not be open to the doing that, because I do think that there, people have to stop complaining and have to put something in action.
I I totally understand and respect that. Uh, I I would ask, if possible, and I understand everyone's busy, uh, would it be possible to have those amendments prior to, you know, just moments before the vote? Even if we could just get twenty-four hours with them to uh to to read them and familiarize ourselves with them, would that be possible on your end?
Well, you have them now, but I'll send them to you when I combine them. That's, I mean, I do have some more. I just wanna remind people, remember, I was, you know, when we were out there at the uh Union Hall and we were trying, I was on the team that was trying to change things. So don't try to act like, oh, Sharon is trying to change things. Now, Alderman ties, I always have been.
No, I I I I understand that. I respect that. Um, I I I am certainly not trying to uh to put words in your mouth or change the past or anything like that. I just wanna make sure that, at least for myself and for some of uh my uh uh less senior colleagues, that we we have some some time with this, to the time with these amendments to to familiarize ourselves with them and get comfortable with them. It's frustrating for me, and this frustration is not directed towards you, it's directed towards the uh the cyber world that we've been living in uh to try and uh uh hold these meetings. It's it's difficult to both be uh paying attention to the discussions on the floor while uh refreshing the drive and going through nine amendments and uh trying to familiarize myself with that. At the same time, I'm trying to pay attention to everything and stay engaged. Uh, and, you know, back in the day, as I I know that you know, uh, we did these from the floor and, you know, the clerk would come around and drop paper copies. And uh and and that, that made a lot more sense to me, just in terms of being able to comprehend everything. Um, so I I really appreciate the fact that you're willing to put this on informal for another week. Uh, like I said, I'm I'm with you on the seniority. I've been with you on the seniority the whole time. Uh, I just uh need a little bit more time with this, so I I thank you for that. And with that, uh, I I will withdraw my motion to send this back.
And I address and say it, so I will send you the combined, what I combined, okay? And I will email it to the clerk or to my secretary to have it sent to the full board. It's, I I was really trying to be more transparent by doing it that way. So you could just say, this is rule six, this is rule seven, but they say the same thing.
I appreciate that. Uh, and with that, uh, Madam President, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Alderman. Um, I think I lost who was the second on that. We need to withdraw the second as well.
Alderman peel.
Alderwoman peel. Uh, Alderwoman from the seventeenth, will you withdraw your second? Alderwoman from the seventeenth?
Um, members of the board, and yes, I do withdraw my second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Very briefly, um, I just wanted to state that we have had a very, as you all uh call it robust discussion. I can't imagine much more would be said in a committee meeting. But I do appreciate the fact that uh the Alderwoman from the first ward is um allowing this to go back on the informal calendar. But I do too want to remind everyone um of that was present at that caucus meeting that we've been talking about that uh all of this was presented almost exactly what she is doing. Uh, and it was three different entities that uh presented uh rule changes. And it's all-inclusive of the things that she has included. Uh, and what I want to remind everybody is, you don't wanna, we don't need to look any worse to the public than we look now. We have a few months to go before we'll have a new session to undo, scramble, reassign. We don't need a lot of upset. We need to get down to the business of this city. We need to make sure that we put everything in order, most especially impressing upon the administration, that we need to get money on the street to help our constituency. We need to clean up all of the problems that we have with negotiation with unions, uh, people not being promoted, you name it, we got it. Worrying about a committee when we are a committee of the whole, the Board of Aldermen is a committee of the whole. Anytime something comes out of a committee and it comes to the floor, we have the ability to debate it and even change the course. So let's not get too different and confused about what we should be doing right now. And I thank you, Alderwoman from the first ward, because if it was me, I wouldn't have done it. I would have went ahead and had my vote. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the eighth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe I saw the Alderman from the twenty-seventh's hand go up before mine, so since I'm speaking for the second time, I'd be happy to yield.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the 8th. I just wanted to bring back the beginning of the meeting when the Madam President said us working together and trying to take care of business at hand. And I'm encouraging you all to hear what the Alderwoman from the 19th stated. Alderwoman tires, again, has compromised. And so I think everybody needs to pay attention to what's going on. This is not us trying to work together. This is, again, us trying to work against each other. We have a city that's under siege, and we need to address these issues to make sure that we can make sure our constituents are taken care of. So thank you, Alderwoman tires, for putting it on the informal calendar, compromising on the second time. And I pray that we move forward on this and people come together and work to make sure that we get the rules where they need to be so we can take care of our business. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the 8th?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I want to kind of come back a little bit. The reason, the reason that we are here right now, that we are even having this discussion that we've had as much turmoil as we have had is because of the malfeasance in public office of our previous president. I think it is important that we center that, that this, this upheaval that we are dealing with would not have happened if not for that. And we have, we have multiple new members of the board because of that. We have had multiple special elections. Our city is sick of electing us, but is going to have to do so again in March and April. But I want to center that because it makes a difference to these last eight meetings. We have eight more full board meetings until we have a brand-new Board of Aldermen. In 2023, there'll be 14 members. Eight meetings is not a lot of time. We have holidays that coming up in between. I think it's maybe only two, three more meetings before the final day to introduce a board bill. So if work is going to get done, it has to get done quickly. And I do also want to echo the, the comments of the, of the President and the Alderwoman from the 27th just now about working together. I was careful in how I spoke about some of these things previously. I do want to state on the record that our previous president sowed division amongst us. When we
Point of order, point of order, not the previous president, two presidents ago.
Oh, sorry, I apologize, I apologize. Not, not the previous interim president, the previously elected president. So division amongst us in, in ways that committee assignments were made back then in pulling people off of committees and moving people around, in only giving people one committee or putting all of the people he didn't want, he didn't like on committees that didn't need or didn't have a whole lot of bills coming in front of them, even though the stated purpose was to let new Aldermen have experience on some of the big committees. I was never placed on any of those big committees, even though I requested them. I was never added to public safety when the Alderman from the 23rd requested that I be, and we sent that request to the President. There has been a lot of behind-the-scenes movement that has hurt the city of St. Louis because of all of this maneuvering and all of this sowing of division. And so I, I want to say, I don't think any single one of us got elected to try to mess up somebody else's ward, to try to get in somebody else's way, to try to block things from coming through the board so that nobody else could get work done. We all got elected because we want to serve the citizens of the people of St. Louis. And I think we can do that. I think we can come together and do that. I think it's going to be a bit of a culture shift to try to do that in, in eight short meetings in five short months to try to build back trust that was broken, to try to build back camaraderie and understanding of each other as humans and not just squares on these boxes that we've been for the past two and a half years, is difficult to do. But I'm asking that folks, that we try to do that, that we try to give each other the benefit of the doubt, that we're all working for something that, that works for all of us here. That the new president has reached out to
Point of order, are we still, are we, did we retract the motion or not?
This
We had somebody that said a motion.
We, we retract the motion to send it to committee. The, the resolution itself is still being debated as it is not yet been
And I want to take it and put it right on informal calendar.
You can't do that in the, you can't do that on a point of order.
Please.
I'm just going to say, I'm going to do it. I'm going to put it back on the formal calendar, so we, we don't need to, if she gets into this further, I'm going to get into the other divisions that we have. So I just want you to understand that.
Alderwoman from the 8th, you may proceed.
Thank you. I Sorry, let me take a breath here. This is not aimed at any one Alderperson. This is not aimed at these rule changes. This is not aimed. I, I am, I'm trying to This job is an incredibly difficult job. I have already stated publicly, I am not running for reelection. I am not trying to cement anything for a reelection campaign. I am merely speaking to our ability to do our jobs for the next five months. And so I am just asking that we allow the President to work, allow her to continue meeting with every Alderman as she has offered so willingly and so quickly to do with such an incredibly quick transition of power, and that we can work together on this, that we can maybe assume best intentions from each other in a way that we weren't able to do before. I, I previously, I have always supported the Alderwoman from the first removal of continuous seniority. I sat next to her on the floor and I voted every time in favor of that. The rule change that we presented at caucus to select new committee members was a snake draft. It was not, it was not a delegation of more authority to the top. It was each of us would be selecting members, or we would be selecting committees that we wanted to participate in so that we all had a chance to at least get one of our top choices. That was, that was what was presented in the caucus. We have, we have lists of those things. I, I understand having shared power for the powers of the presidency because we are a unique Board of Aldermen, that our, our leadership is elected from the whole of the city of St. Louis and not internally from our body. And so maybe there are checks that are needed on that. I, I do not remember this specific formulation on these amendments being presented to us before. It was, it's not something that I remember working on. I could be mistaken. It is not something I remember working on. But I do, I would like, I would love to know, you know, in some of the conversations that are happening one-on-one, if there are some folks who are willing to let other people share some work on these committees, because these, these committees are a ton of work. And we have, like I said, we have eight meetings left. There, there's work to be done on every single one of the committees, especially the big three committees. It is, it's not about trying to punish anyone or trying to condemn anyone or move anyone out of power, but to share some of the load, because there is a lot to be done here. So I, that is what I have, and I, I am I, I guess my, the reason that I didn't bring any further amendments this week is because I do think, I think we're, we're pretty close to the end here, that there's so much work that needs to be done as quickly as possible and changing up, changing up our rules, changing up. It, to me, didn't seem worthy of our time to try to mess with, mess with all of our rules as we move forward. So, you know, it is, it is up to each member to decide how they, they want to interact with the new president, with new leadership, and with these last eight months. And I truly would hope that we all try to assume the best of each other, that we try to resume professionalism, that we try to resume collegiality together, because I, we're, we're all here for the public, we're all here for the service, and our city needs us to act like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the 8th. Alderwoman from the 13th, you are recognized.
Thank you so much. I want to echo some of the comments from the Alderwoman from the 8th. You know, I certainly, you know, didn't say that I had any new amendments to, to make before or after this past meeting. I agree that the amendments that were made or discussed in the past had to do with more general sharing of power among our entire body. I do not remember a single instance where it would just be two more people who have more power than the rest of the body, as all of these amendments would do, which is just sort of like the exact opposite of what we tried to do. So it's kind of funny that it's even being suggested that they're the same. And I'd also just like to say that, you know, sometimes it's really embarrassing to be on this board because of how we talk to each other. Certainly not why I want to be here. I'm hoping that we can get the business of the city done without name-calling, without lecturing each other. I mean, it's just vote yes, no, comment on what's in front of us. You know, I, I don't think, we're all adults, like, let's just stop with that kind of behavior. It's just, it's embarrassing. I'd, yeah, I'd like to say also that we absolutely need a shake-up on this board. The fact that we had leadership on the board actively stealing money or, you know, trying to, to pad their pockets at the expense of the city of St. Louis is absurd. It's appalling, it's embarrassing. If we don't need a shake-up after that happens, I don't know when we need one. To me, that sounds like something very much that is needed. I believe former President Volmer said it in his remarks last week that we did need a shake-up. I don't, I just can't imagine that the idea of not needing a shake-up right now is really what people think is right for the city of St. Louis. You know, I would be in favor of amendments that went back to assigning committees as, you know, discussed in terms of that snake order where you go down the list of seniority and then come back up and then go down and assign committees so that people get some choice here in what they're, they're going to do. I'm in favor of electing the President, Vice President of the, or sorry, the Vice President and Floor Leader of the Board. I am not in favor of just giving two people at the top of the seniority ladder more power simply to hurt the President's ability to do things. So I see a huge difference between those two options. I will be voting no on these amendments today if we had them in front of us. I'll be voting no next week, and I will see what other amendments come before us that we will, we will possibly be discussing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Alderman from the 12th, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to apologize to the Alderwoman of the first publicly for allowing my emotions to get the better of me. And Alderwoman, we've had these, we've had these chats in the past about how we both have very deep hearts and very deep emotions. So on that note, I apologize, and I do apologize for using the term bald-faced liar. So I would thank the Alderwoman of the first for putting these on the informal, and I would call on the Alderman of the 25th to likewise put his on the informal, because again, my issue at present is that it seems, well, that I was blindsided by these, quite frankly, and that these were, I was expecting one committee discussed amendment, now there's suddenly 10. Now, as for the Alderwoman of the first condensing them from nine to, down to six or seven, I don't have any particular stance. But I do want to say that I
We, we are live now.
We're back live.
Do we have quorum back?
Yes, ma'am, you have a quorum.
All right, we were on the Alderman from the 12th. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. So again, I reiterate my apology to the Alderwoman of the first, my gratitude for putting this on the informal. And I would merely echo my colleagues from the 13th, from the 8th, and from the 24th in that this has been not just this particular debate, but, I mean, this entire body has been incredibly difficult to serve on in solely by Zoom because situations such as what just occurred by total accident do occur frequently, or last week with my connectivity issues. And there is no sense of collegiality or of working or of discourse. We log in, we're these little tiles, and it has been so disheartening. And to the Alderwoman of the first, I absolutely recognize that I am a a nascent, a new, a baby Alderman, if you will. I would accept all three. And with that comes many cons, of course. I mean, there's many drawbacks to that. But I would say that from my perspective, I'm serving on a board with, with individuals who've been here for decades and who have had a decade to address the things that we're seeking to address in these final months, all these things that we're referencing. And there's a sense of frustration and disheart, disheartening that comes with that as well. And it, it is just so difficult to legislate from, from a tablet. It is so difficult to try and have these, these conversations when every conversation is by cell phone or by text, and it's easy to ignore those calls and those texts. I have sent letters to certain Alders' houses trying to establish communication. So again, it is all these factors plus that very deep heart of mine, Alderwoman, that come into that, with that surface when suddenly, when one is expecting one amendment, there's all these amendments and, and yet there is no communication, there is no discourse, not just between you and myself, Alderwoman of the first, but between this board. So I will apologize for, for allowing my emotions to get the better of me and for being indecorous. And I would just ask that perhaps everyone at this board considers I have sat at my desk three times. And that has proven so incredibly difficult to collaborate or communicate or serve this city. And I do not currently feel that we are leaving the city off a better place with this 14-member board, and I so desperately want us to get there. And, I mean, as always, my cellphone, my inbox, my messaging app, all of it is always open. So Alderwoman of the first, thank you for your 30 years of perspective. Thank you for listening to my two years of perspective. And thank you, and the Alderman of the 25th, for putting your amendments on the informal calendar just for one more week. And with that, I respectfully yield back, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the 12th. Alderwoman from the first?
First, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. First of all, the former President Volmer is right, it's two weeks, actually. I saw the two up there. So I want to say to just the young group of people, I am a nurturer. The people who are new will find that if you were on my committee, I'll let you run committees, I taught you, I taught you the rules, there are a number of people behind me. What I do not like is that bald-faced liar. You better be glad, Alderman from the 12th, that this is a different Alderwoman that you're talking to and that my husband is not standing here, because he would knock you on your butt for saying that to me. You better get a hold of your tongue. Now, I, one of the things that I learned is when people say, teach you who they are, believe them. So now you have done two things that have violated my principle of who I am. Then you go, oh, that's so sorry, oh, we're both just, oh, we're both just emotional. I have not called you a bald-faced liar. Now, there are some people outside are liars, like the former Alderman from the 17th, because he is, and I knew he was. And, but I don't do what I don't know. And you do, you get all emotional, and I have defended you so many times, I, I won't be doing that anymore. You do that, you do that on purpose.
Point of order.
I don't appreciate it.
What is your point of order, Alderman?
I don't believe we're supposed to be directing comments or conversation towards each other without yielding for questions.
Alderwoman from the first, do you want to ask the Alderman from the 12th to yield?
I do not, and that is not a correct point of order. I did not ask him a question. I'm responding directly to the things he said to me. I did not ask for a question. He's saying how sorry he is, what he's did, and I don't agree with this, he's sorry. You keep doing that when you call somebody a bald-faced liar. You better be coming up with the proof right then and there. So I disagree with, that's a valid point of order. Point of order is when you are doing something else, and I didn't ask him for a reply. I am now making my same statement that he made. And I want to go on further to say that the, I am always interested when people talk about in their entire point of view, well, they've never seen anything like that. And you all know, I famously said it to the Alderman from the 21st ward, well, good thing you just got down here less than a year ago. You won't have a perspective of how long things have gone on if you just got here. If your perspective is only because you got here, that is part of the problem. I now hear you saying about you want this peace and kumbaya. There's nobody that's had more argument with the former, the last elected. So that's how I'm going to distinguish from the Alderman from the 10th. The last elected president who took my community, tore it up, took my vote, took the people's vote. He told me I kicked his rear end for 21 The last elected president who took my community, tore it up, took my vote, took the people's vote. He told me I kicked his rear end for 21 years. I did. I called him out. I fought against him. I cited, I went over and worked with the progressives. I worked, I gave them my knowledge. I remember the alderman from the 24th saying one time that, hey, we got this person who knows a lot and she shares it. I always have. I don't have to agree with any of you all. What I did come to agree and find out for myself is that you don't know anything in a perspective beyond your nose. I know what it's like to be 25, 35, 55. You don't know what it's like. You don't know what it's like to have somebody tear up your ward and you not be able to vote. But I still come down here and I still have a spirit that I don't call progressive. I call liberal. A lot of these things that you all want to talk about is progressive. I had them back in the 90s. I got my rear end cooked because I wouldn't do tax, tax increment financing for the Snooks deal. So three years I got my rear end cooked all over the place. You all don't come with a perspective only of yours and then, well, this board must be horrible if it doesn't agree with me. I don't think that it was necessary, Alderwoman from the eighth, to bring up the former elected president at this time. We're talking about kumbaya and getting around. Now you want to bring him up and he's horrible. It's a lot of people think that you all are horrible. I want you to understand that. You think you're horrible, that you start fights, that the things that you say for one person, you don't say for another person. And that is really just the difference again of who's going, who's ox. I try to be very consistent with what my positions are, even when it may irritate the people who's I'm working with now. I'm consistent. I believe in good government. I believe that you get back up, you may be cheated, but never defeated. I was cheated, but not defeated. So when I hear you guys wanting to say kumbaya, but then you want to bring up the former president and other aldermen, I don't really need to do that. They're gone. They're going to get their justice in the courts. So you're still taking digs and you don't hear yourself. Please stop. It makes my stomach hurt that when I hear you say that. Let me say it again. It makes my stomach hurt as a black female to have seen them drag three black men across the papers and it made me cry and be sad, even though I've had all kinds of fights with them because people judge my community by people who are across the front of the page. I've been here 31 years. Let me tell you what one of the people who put those people in jail said to the feds and other people. That Alderwoman Tyus, she won't take anything. She won't even take water from you. I don't take anything. I am not crooked. I mostly raise my own money. I don't want to be put in a bag with everybody else and say, well, we need to clean the place out. The alderman from the 12th once told me that he thought everybody should be gotten rid of because he wasn't able to get his agenda done. I disagree with that. I think that's what's wrong with the quote unquote Democrats. We kick the good Democrats in the butt and then say, hey, we just going to get rid of everything. That doesn't necessarily have to be. And it also is not a good idea to get rid of seniority of people who've been here or just long lasting information that you can go to. And if you don't believe that, please stop calling my phone when you get in trouble and then asking me for help. You cannot be on both sides. I'm not going to take your calls anymore. If you're saying, oh, well, we don't want any senior people here. We don't want any people who've gone through things, then you will find out how you will quickly mess things up and go, wow, what happened? Again, immaturity on your parts to be bringing up the former president. This is a new president. This is something I worked for. John Lewis had to withdraw his endorsement of a candidate, presidential candidate Clinton.
What is your point of order, Alderwoman from the sixth?
I just think we are, we are veering so far off what we're supposed to be talking about and voting on and just the constant lecturing and condescension is, is problematic and lax decorum.
I agree from both ends.
Alderwoman from the first, could we please keep this focused on resolution one as amended?
And I tried to do that, Madam President, and then you said, oh, this is not the time. See, I, you're doing just what the former elected president do. Don't let, stop the people. Then I won't do it. I won't have to say that. But when you let them talk about something, I'm going to come back and talk about it. So shouldn't have brought up the president. They talk about lecturing, but that's what you do. That not you, Madam President, that's what the group does. And then anytime, I want to say this because this is from the Black Caucus. Anytime black people are doing something, it is a group of you that we all know who you are, that you got a problem with it. You, you're finding a reason why it shouldn't happen. Oh, then you can't do this. You're not the only person that has a that has an agenda and a, and a priority. And right now you don't have the majority of the votes at this Board of Aldermen. I would suggest to you all that you learn how to come and sit down and make peace and not call people ball faced at liars and then say, oh, I'm sorry about it. And not bring up the former president, which does wasn't one of my best friends. It's sad. Remember the black community. So stop doing that. Stop thinking that you know more about black people than we do. Stop thinking that you are know more about representing North St. Louis. We have said that to you over and over and over again. And when you pick your little black friends from South St. Louis, they don't represent North St. Louis and how you've crafted this whole thing. The reason why we have this is because you do not know how to compromise and work with people. And I'm talking about me, the person who, so the, the president talked about how she always supported my seniority. You all said that. What the president don't tell you is that they were going to censure her and put her off the Board of Aldermen and ask her about it. Sharon Tyus stood up by herself, defended her, went against all the senior alderpeople and made them roll off. I still have all the paperwork because I thought that was so wrong. And I talked about how they treated women and they let men get away from stuff and one by one they rolled off of it and said, okay, Sharon, you're blackmailing us. I said, oh, no, I'm just playing the good old boys club. I do not believe in treating people badly, but when you refuse to look at yourself and hear when people are saying, you're doing this. You don't like lectures. I don't like them either. I don't like you telling me you know more about North St. Louis and black people than me. But I don't care how we say it. You do it over and over and over again. And whenever we come with something that wasn't your original idea, then you're like, oh, I can't be with this. Okay. Let's do that. Count the number of votes you'll have at this Board of Aldermen. Okay. Stop doing that. And I've said that over and over. I've said that to the president before she was the president. I had to walk away because you could not hear how harmful going to 14 is. You all are gleeful. But if you look at those wards that the North St. Louis have, we probably have four black wards and maybe two maybe. It's awful, but you all don't care. You're like the people who watch a little old lady get knocked over the head and say, oh, isn't that bad? Oh, how much money did you steal from her? You do not get it. And that is why we're not going to have any peace until you look at yourself and say, these are the things maybe I need to be looking at. And this was a person who was not only my ally, but even when she was mad at me, Alderwoman from the eighth, she still stood up for my right to have my board bill heard and heard Aldermen. I don't do that and neither do the black Aldermen and neither do the conservative or white Aldermen or whoever. So you are going to have to take a look at yourself. That's what I'm saying. And I'm saying it because I've been, I work with all sides and I don't find you to be people who want to work with all sides. You want to pick the low hanging fruit and say, look, we're talking for everybody. We got Deshawn Jones, the mayor. We got Congresswoman Cory Bush. None of them have been legislators here and none of them have had to put up with many of what many of the black Aldermen have put up with. And please, if you don't want lecturing, don't lecture and reach out and really hear what people are saying and stop crying like you're being picked on because you are doing as much throwing of mud as anybody else. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the first, are you still planning on putting resolution one as amendment on the informal calendar?
I am. I was waiting for you to tell me appropriate time to do it, ma'am.
Okay, you may go ahead and do that if you would like.
Madam President, I'd like to put the resolution one on the informal calendar. And I would like to also say to 12th Ward, when I put it on the calendar, any amendments also goes. So the alderman from the 25th amendment also goes there.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please make note. All right.
No noted.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, November 21st, 2022, Intergovernmental Affairs will meet at 10 a.m. via webinar. Tuesday, November 22nd, 2022, Streets will meet 10 a.m. via webinar. The office will be closed. There's no meeting on Wednesdays. The office will be closed for Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday and Friday.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, wanted to thank our, once again, I wanted to congratulate Alderwoman Clark Hubbard on her birthday. Happy birthday. But I also wanted to say two things. This coming Tuesday, as we all prepare for Thanksgiving, I'd like to formally invite everyone to our 10th Annual Cherokee Street Thanksgiving. For those who have joined us in the past, it's a great time to have the Alderwoman from the 20th and myself slice turkey for you. It's going to be from 6 to 10 p.m. Tuesday, November 22nd at 2720 Cherokee Street, also known as the Golden Record. And then the final thing I wanted to mention was condolences to the St. Louis Blues and musician industry who lost a great Roland Johnson this week. So hopefully we all, you know, reach out. I know there's going to be a service coming up at 1860s, I believe, Saturday. So we lost a great legend in St. Louis music. That is all. I thank you very much. Have a good weekend.
Alderman from the 23rd?
Yeah, if possible, and I'm sure they'll put it out, but I'd like to hold a public safety meeting to further discuss that resolution sometime Monday or Tuesday, depending on whatever day the clerk feels we have time. I don't want to get too many things going, you know, getting into the holiday, but either day, one of those days I'd like to have a public safety meeting. So we'll announce it now.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the second.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I would like to invite everyone out to our holiday lunch dinner in, in the second ward. It is going to be at 8005 Long Broadway on Monday, November the 21st from 3 to 7. This is sponsored by myself as well as the Bayton Community Coalition, Arca Prevent Ed, Living with Purpose, St. Louis Area Food Bank, Four Walls and Beyond, K9 and Places for People and Procter and Gamble. So come out, play bingo with us, congregate. We're going to have social distancing going on in masks. So please come out and have a great holiday celebration with us. Thank you.
Alderman from the 10th?
Thank you, Madam President. November 26th, Saturday next week will be Christmas on the Hill. Please come down from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. Lots of family oriented functions. Some adult oriented functions also. So come down and have some fun at the piazza and the, the whole neighborhood area will be up and running. Thank you very much.
Alderwoman from the first?
Madam President and members of the board, I don't know if we did, you know, Martin Matthews passed and we did an embank resolution. But I don't know if we silenced for him. He was, he and Martin Matthews, Dicky, Mr. Dicky, both were very, very important people in my community. In fact, Mr. Dicky lived in the 4,900 block of St. Louis Avenue and he passed when I was still the 20th Ward Alderperson. And I just would think we would be remiss not to have a moment of silence for Martin Matthews because when you read that resolution, he was a fabulous man. And I, I request a moment of silence.
Right. Let's take a moment of silence. Right. Alderwoman from the 21st?
Madam President, members of the board. So I, I think that if you guys don't want to cook breakfast on Thanksgiving Day, you can drive through and get it for free at Tribe City, which is located at 5124 Natural Bridge. Just drive on through the line, pick up your breakfast, go home and then cook your dinner. Thank you.
Right. Alderwoman from the 20th?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to announce that we will be having an intergovernmental affairs hearing on Monday at 10 a.m. to hear a, the bill on the Charter Commission. So we welcome public testimony, of course, and the thoughts and questions of members of the Board of Aldermen. And we want to have a robust discussion so we can fully vet this and discuss it and hopefully have attention on it. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 14th?
Yes, I would just like to announce that the Saturday after Thanksgiving, Bevo will have lights the lighting of the trees at Bevo at the intersection of Morgan Ford and Graboy. This, this is becoming an annual event. Come on out. Enjoy some of the caroling and the kickoff to the holiday season in Bevo. And stop over at the Bevo Mill or at Tim's Chrome Bar and have a little libation. And thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the 27th?
Thank you, Madam President and the board. I just wanted to announce for the 13th year that we are having a Thanksgiving dinner, a fellowship dinner in the ward at City Hall Bible Church from 11 to 3. It's free. We'll have new clothing and hygiene items that will be given away also on that day. And we're encouraging our residents to come out to just fellowship together and talk. And it's and a young man came to me 13 years ago and said, God told him to feed people. And so it has grown tremendously and I am so honored to sponsor it again this year. And they are going to deliver hot Thanksgiving meals to the seniors that's in the area and to make sure that they get a hot meal because they don't have families and/or if they're handicapped. So this is something we started about two years ago and it has caught on very well. So they feed the, the senior and the caretaker to make sure that they can enjoy Thanksgiving also. And also I would like to announce that Annie Malone is having their Thanksgiving dinner for their children today. And it's from 12 to 2. And then they'll have a football game in Summer's Football Field and the kids are excited about that. And then we have Procter and Gamble that's coming to play football with our kids. So everybody is welcome to just participate and watch the kids enjoy themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. One last thing I would like to say, just before we break today, you will be receiving an email with some staff announcements from me as we start to transition to a new staff. When we do come back after the Thanksgiving holiday, we are tentatively expected to be in person at 1520 Market where there is adequate filtration devices and we are working on that and you will receive additional information about that in the coming days. I appreciate everybody who has responded to me and sat down and had one-on-one conversations thus far. I've met with probably three fourths of the board and I look forward to meeting with everybody else for those conversations over the, the next week or so. So if I haven't heard back from you, you're going to be hearing from me again. And I look forward in the spirit of collaboration, figuring out how we can all work together for the betterment of the city. All right. Excused Alderman?
Madam President, just a point of order. There's three alderpeople who have their hands up still. I don't know if they're left over from the announcements or
My apologies. I thought they were up from the announcements.
Alderwoman Davis and Alderwoman Middlebrook, it looks like.
Alderwoman Middlebrook, did you have another announcement?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman Davis, did you have an announcement?
Oh, yes. I just wanted to wish well the former staff of the Board Office. Those employees worked diligently. They had nothing to do with anything else that was going on with the situation. I wish them well in their future endeavors and most especially knowing that they suffered behind all of this because they were doing their job every day. And I just wanted to wish them well. Thank you.
Great. Excused Alderman?
Thank you, Madam President. All alderpersons are present today.
Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President. All members are present today.
Wonderful. Adjournment. Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adjourn until Friday, December 12th, or December 12th. Friday, December 2nd at 10 a.m. at 1520 Market.
Second.
Was moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth that we adjourn until, did you say December 2nd or December?
Second. December 2nd.
Were we going to do the first because of the funeral?
Oh, my apologies. I guess we need Alderman from the ninth, if you would remove your second on my motion.
I will remove my second.
And I'll remove my initial motion. I would like to move that we adjourn until Thursday, December 1st at 10:00 AM at 1520 Market Street.
Second.
Okay. So motion made by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the alderperson from the ninth, that we adjourn until Thursday, December 1st at 10:00 AM. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So I hand my hand up again.
Okay.
But I just want to know, what is the funeral?
For Clerk Kennedy's brother
Okay, thank you.
At 10:00 AM on the 2nd.
Thank you.
All right, then let's try that one last time. I think the alder pup is ready to go. We had a motion from the Alderman of the 25th, seconded by the alderperson of the ninth, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. See you on December 1st.